Welcome to the Callexico City Council, Callexico Redevelopment Successor Agency, Callexico Financing Authority Planning Commission meeting. Meeting is now in session, called to order at 6:40 PM. Rock Hall?
Mayor Noricumbo?
Present.
Mayor Protem Legaspi?
Present.
Councilmember Ty Linda?
Present.
Councilmember Marquez?
Present.
Councilmember Calderon?
Present.
We have Quorum.
Okay, thank you, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes. City of Callexico, mission statement. Together we pledge to provide effective and efficient services in an urgent and special manner to improve the quality of life for all in our community. We have Callexico.
Okay, please stay standing for the invocation. Father Carlos Rojas, please.
Let us pray. The Lord is with you, hallelujah. The Lord is with you. You are the fire, the love that sets our hearts ablaze. Lord, may my hands be resurrected so that they may be able to know how to give. Lord, may my eyes be resurrected so that they may know how to see and hear so that others may be happy because of the way I see them. Lord, may my ears be resurrected so that they may know how to hear your voice and not be deaf from the voices that call out in past darkness. Lord, may my mouth be resurrected so that it may bear wings with you and say wicked smiles. Lord, resurrect my heart so that it may be a living temple of your spirit, knowing how to give more and share yours and forgiving and understanding and learning to share pain and joy with your love. My God, dispose of me with all that I am and all that I am. May my life have the glory and fragrance of the risen Jesus. Amen. Resuscitate all sinners, hallelujah. Resuscitate all sinners. Tú eres el fuego del amor que incendia en tus corazones. Señor, que resuciten mis manos para que sean dedicadas y sepan dar. Señor, que resuciten mis ojos para que sepan ver a la necesidad y para que los demás se sientan felices por mi modo de mirarlos. Señor, que resuciten mis oídos para que sepan oír tu voz y no queden sombreros a las voces que llaman y piden confianza. Señor, que resucite mi boca para que dé testimonio de ti y consiga despertar sonrisas. Señor, que resucite mi corazón para que sea ti el mismo de tu espíritu y sepa dar calor y refugio que se ha generado su impermanencia y comprender y aprender a compartir dolor y alegría con mi alma. Dios mío, disponedme con todo lo que soy y con todo lo que tengo. Que mi vida tenga el amor y el perdón de su resucitado. Amen.
Muchas gracias, Father. Please be seated. Close session announcements?
Thank you, Mayor, we have no reports from closed session, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Approve all the agenda, do you have motion to approve?
I'd like to... Is this it? Okay. Under the announcement?
That's after.
Okay.
Okay, so, do I have a second for approval of the agenda?
A second.
Okay, Rock Hall?
Mayor Noricumbo?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Legaspi?
Yes.
Councilmember Ty Linda?
Yes.
Councilmember Marquez?
Yes.
Councilmember Calderon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to presentations. We have a presentation by Letizia Plankarte Garcia and Maria Reese from the Imperial County Behavioral Health Services.
Good evening, council members and public, I'm very excited to be here. This feels weird. Good evening, and I just want to say thank you for the invitation. I think this is the perfect month to come and share information about our services. May is Mental Health Awareness Month, and we take the opportunity to go and talk about, you know, mental health, mental illness, what it is, because we want the community to know that mental health has existed and will continue to exist, and we should treat it as any, any conditions that if you go to the doctor for diabetes, a heart condition, is the same. We should be able to talk about mental health the same way. So, again, we invite everyone, the community, to join us this month in talking about mental health and not hiding, not using inappropriate language when we refer to individuals with mental illness, but, you know, get educated on what mental illness is and how to appropriately address mental health. So, my name is Letizia Plankarte Garcia, and I'm Director of Behavioral Health. So today, I'll be talking to you about our mission and our vision statement, our agency, the different divisions that we have at Behavioral Health, the services that we provide under the Mental Health Department and Substance Use Disorder Department, our crisis continuum of care, and new initiatives that have really changed the way we have done business and operated our services over the years. So our mission is really to empower individual and families. At one point, we thought individuals just needed to be medicated and, you know, provide medication or treatment many times that was not effective, where now we believe that individuals can recover, that people can get better with the appropriate treatment. Medications and treatment has really improved, so we really believe that people can live a very, you know, appropriate and healthy lives. Our vision is to provide exceptional, inclusive, and equitable community-based mental health and substance use treatment. So at ICDHS, we are the department that has a contract with the State of California to provide services to Medi-Cal beneficiaries. Either we provide them directly or we can contract with providers. In Imperial County, there are very few providers that can provide these surveys or that are equipped. Many times we refer our clients to some community agencies, and then some of the doctors don't feel they have the capacity to prescribe even though the clients are stable. There's a lot of insecurity. There are very few providers, so Behavioral Health primarily provides for mental health, ninety-five percent of the services, and only for five percent is contracted out. Under the Substance Use Program, it's the same. We contract with the state to provide this service to the community. Behavioral Health provides ninety-eight percent of the service, and under those ninety-five percent, we include the services that we contract out of state, not out of state, out of the county, because they're not available locally, and only a two percent, which is our methadone clinic that we contract with. So our department has six divisions, far clinical and one is administrative. We have the children's division, the youth and young adults, the adults and older adults, the mental health triage and engagement, and our substance use disorder services. I know it's hard to see, but under each program, we have services and programs that are tailored specific for those age groups and populations, and the needs for those specific groups. And then we have our administration that deals with, you know, access, human resources, payroll, contracting, so that's another division. Our service locations, we have clinics all over Imperial County. We have twenty-two certified clinics, and we are the mental health, we're in Callexico, Central Brawley, Winter Heaven. We're in nineteen schools, we're at the Central Regional Center, County Jail, and Juvenile Hall. And for substance use, we're in Callexico Central, County Jail, eleven schools. We have twenty-five prevention programs in different schools. We're at the two local hospitals, and we're also at Juvenile Hall. So under, under mental health, because at this point, the state is integrating for both programs. These are the services for mental health, and then I'll review the services for substance use. Our specialty mental health services include for all populations, crisis interventions, crisis stabilization, medication support services, targeted case management, which is where we assist linking individuals to resources, mental health services provided by a therapist, and mental health services provided by a rehabilitation technician, and then inpatient treatment. This is another service that we don't have an inpatient facility, so when an individual requires hospitalization, we have contracts with hospitals in San Diego, LA, Riverside, so we send those individuals to those facilities. There are three services that are specific for youth up to the age of twenty, and some of these services came about due to, in the foster care system. These have initiated because a lot of times there are kids that have gone through the system and the dependent or works to the court, and they have not received the appropriate care. So many times going from placement to placement, so there's been a big way of restructuring the system where we work very closely with Department of Social Services, probation, addressing the needs of children in the system. This includes intensive care coordination, intensive home-based services, and therapeutic behavioral health services. At one point, this started for the dependent and the works of the court, but in recent years, the state said these services should be available for all kids that present severe problems, so now we offer them to old children and adolescents. And for adults only, it's the adult crisis residential services, and you may be familiar, we have a local residential facility, it's called Jackson House, and what's the address? I don't know the address, but if you know, if you're familiar with ninety-eight behind Hondo, there's a house that you can see from the freeway, that's Jackson House, and we pay for individuals to be placed at that facility up to ninety days to prevent hospitalizations or returning to hospitalizations. For substance use disorder, a few years ago, before 2018, services were very limited for individuals who experienced substance use disorder. We were limited to do groups and some individual sessions, the hours were very limited during a week. We could not do a lot. But now, with, when we became a Medi-Cal organized delivery system, they expanded to all these services. There's early intervention, outpatient and outpatient intensive services, residential treatment, okay, again, we pay to have individuals that need a higher level of care to be placed in facilities where they can have withdrawal treatment, and then also treatment in order for them to return and get outpatient services. Withdrawal management, medication for addiction treatment, and that's provided at the clinics and at the hospitals, care coordination, recovery services, clinician consultation, and recovery residence. What the state did for SUD individuals, they created the ASAM. It's an assessment that it stands for all individuals receiving substance use treatment that tells us the level of care that they need, and based on that assessment, you know, it's what determines what level of service that individual would be receiving, and it's very, very effective. So at Behavioral Health, we strongly believe in evidence-based practices. At one time, there were no models that dealt specific to the individual's needs when it came to mental health. A person could be receiving therapy for years without any specific expected outcomes, as long as clients were coming, they were getting something out of it. Now, we have, since 2004, the department has really been expanding on the treatments that we provide for the different age groups. So for children, where you see the first column, those are all the models that we offer, and these are, for the most part, provided by clinicians who are trained to provide those specific services. Aggression replacement training, which is art, it's primarily provided to our school-based programs, cognitive behavioral therapy, we have Copin Cat, which is a model for anxiety in children, dialectical behavioral therapy for depression, eating disorders, First Step to Success, it's also an evidence-based model that we implement at several schools here in Callexico, interpersonal psychotherapy, and motivational interviewing, and praxis with such a very effective parenting model that really helps the families understand mental illness, help them understand the diagnosis, and how to be the best advocate for their kids. Under youth, we have, and I don't want to repeat them all, but youth has a different level of models, adults, SUD, and then triage. They all have very specific models for the population they serve. So one of the things we've been seeing that over the years, we've been seeing an increase in the population and individuals coming for services. We saw a decrease or a small change in 2021 when we were all experiencing COVID, but then after that, the numbers have been increasing. So this is the number of individuals we have served, and these are unduplicated in each fiscal year. And these are the individuals that we started serving since we became an organized delivery system. Again, the numbers are, have been increasing over time. In Callexico, we have the adults and older adults clinic at fifteen oh one West Imperial, and a lot of you may be familiar with, because it has the same address as Cienda and fifteen oh one. Those facilities are the ones where the IBC extension used to be next to Robinson Ford. If you see that corner where we have the sign up there, that's, those are our clinics. We have adults, children, and youth and adults, and adult SUD for adolescents. And then we have one Business and Socialization Program at Broadwood, and then we have the adults and substance use on Fifth Street. In Callexico, we have First Step to Success, and that we have in, I believe, seven schools. So First Step to Success is a program that is developed for children in kindergarten. This is when we started trying to get kids early into services. Many times we're waiting until the kids are having problems, and this, this model helped us identify kids earlier before they start experiencing a lot of failures, especially those kids with ADHD that they start going to school, and then we hear that they're not learning, you know, they're being picked by their peers. So this helps us identify, it's like a game that is played, and everyone in the classroom plays. Initially, there was a little hesitation from the schools, and we have really, really, you know, now they're asking us, and we're having a hard time filling positions to have in more schools in Callexico, there are in seven schools. These are the current patients in Callexico for mental health. We are currently serving, and just to clarify, these are numbers up to the end of April, sixteen thirteen, one thousand six hundred and thirteen, and there, under SUD, we have a hundred and forty-one. And the services by the mental health triage and engagement is, was a- And the services by the mental health triage and engagement is, was two hundred and eighty-one. And we will go into more details on the section for the mental health triage and engagement. We, we have a section specific for that. So Maria Ruiz, who's the deputy director of our triage unit, will go over. But I just wanted to give you a little bit of background on, on why we are where we are right now with our crisis continuum of care. So there were, at one point, we, there were, we were having a lot of disagreements, you know, with the hospitals, with law enforcement, as far as, you know, whose responsibility was it to address the mental health needs of individuals. Primarily the fifty-one fifties. And, and so we hired a couple of consultants. And these consultants developed the roadmap. And in this roadmap, they gave everyone a responsibility of their obligations, what we all needed to do. For behavioral health, they did a lot of, you know, analyze our data, they specify rules, and they provided recommendations of some of the things that we needed to, to, to do for the different levels of interventions. Initially, there's a response, there's an intervention, and there's a resolution of a crisis. So some of the things that they recommended, it was the, you know, they provided ideas on how to strengthen, you know, the gaps, what were the challenges. They also helped us identify the training needs, and not just our needs, but for the different agencies. They helped us establish regular meetings, which happen every month with all law enforcement and with hospitals. So that there's a, a ways of communication, of problem solving when problems arise. They also evaluated the feasibility of a crisis stabilization unit or a psychiatric health facility, because there was an understanding that we needed that type of facility in Piro County. After they evaluated the numbers, they realized that we don't have the numbers in Piro County to really bring those facilities. They are hardly monitored by the state, they require very high level of staff, and the county did not have the number of hospitalizations or the number of, of, that, the high need for those facilities. So the other thing that was happening across the state, because at one point, this became the trend, a lot of these facilities were closing because of the hiring, you know, problems for, for, you know, and very costly. And then they also made the recommendation for us to start the implementation of Casa Serena, and Maria will go over that, and also the mobile units that have really helped us improve as far as our crisis continuum of care.
I think you're gonna be moving. Good afternoon now. Just wanted to give you some information. All the recommendation after the analysis and the recommendation, this is how our crisis continuum of care was before that. So for the most part, in the mental health triage unit, we used to have a mental health triage unit, which is an outpatient designated facility. That outpatient designated facility has six adults beds and three childrens. So pretty much what we're doing that, we provide evaluation and treatment and discharge planning for individuals that are getting placed on a fifty-one fifty. And, and back in the days, what we used to do was, we only received those individuals when law enforcement used to place them on a fifty-one fifty. So that was the role and the responsibility, and that's how we operated, operated our business back then. We also had a transitional engagement supportive services, which is an outpatient clinic, because we pretty much recognized that there was a need for those individuals that got placed on a fifty-one fifty, needed its supportive services, and we need to expedite services and we need to link them to the services that they must need it as well. So those clients that are getting placed on a fifty-one fifty and they were not currently receiving mental health services, they were referred to this program. We also recognized that the community might be identifying individuals that have mental health conditions and would benefit from receiving services, and we needed to work in, in doing engagement in outreach as well. So this program was receiving a lot of referrals from the community. So we were assigning a, a mental health rehab technician. We have a clinician as well to do an evaluation, and we start working on engaging in those individuals. And this, but in twenty twenty-one, we start securing funding. So what it means is there was grants. So we start applying for grants to bring additional services. And, and one of the first grants that we applied, we were able to implement Casa Serena, which has been very successful. So Casa Serena, so we were awarded five millions to bring Casa Serena. And, and so what we wanted to do is, we had, we wanted to have an alternative solution for fifty-one fifties. We wanted to bring some prevention program in a place where individuals will address, will address those immediate needs before they get placed on a fifty-one fifty. So, and this Casa Serena services is offered for pretty much every single age and any individual that is experiencing any psychiatric emergency. When we start operating Casa Serena, well, we start operating Casa Serena from seven AM to ten PM. And the idea and the main goal is to, for the community to know and be aware of the services. So instead of calling law enforcement, they could access Casa Serena. And Casa Serena is located in El Centro. So pretty much what we offer, we offer therapeutic rooms. And serves as a preventative. And we also, what we're doing is we provide assessment, crisis interventions, and medication support therapy. And it has been very successful, year by year. Our numbers and admission has been increasing through Casa Serena, and it has been noting that we've been able to decrease the number of fifty-one fifties throughout the county. Then when we secure funding, we also bring the crisis mobile units. And so before that, I think we start with a pilot program with law enforcement, and I think we start with the Sheriff Department, and we start working and, and, and the crisis response team back in the days. But it was only for certain days, certain hours. And we noted that it started becoming very successful, so we applied for this grant. And we were able to expand the services and bring more services to that. So the pilot project is starting twenty twenty-one, and as well, we got the grant funding in twenty twenty-one. So we assess the need of the community and we find out where actually we need to provide these additional services. So we expand the hours of operation for the crisis response team. And we only, not only do it with the Sheriff Department, with every single law enforcement as well. So we start responding together with law enforcement. So anytime a law enforcement had any needs for mental health assistance, they will call us and we'll be responding together with them. We also noticed that a school-based response team. So what we wanted to do is the schools were having probably children that have crisis, crisis. And instead of then calling law enforcement, we want them to call us so we can respond during school hours. And so that's something that we've been doing. And then we have the care response team, because this is another thing that we're doing. The hospitals were constantly contacting law enforcement on a regular basis because they needed to have an evaluation. So now we're responding to the hospitals and we're responding to outpatient clinics. And finally, we do have our prices, our mobile crisis response team, which is a specialized mobile unit that provides outreach and crisis intervention services. So this is a mobile unit that what we decided to do is, and every single day, we have that unit located in a different city within the county. And in Callexico, usually it's on Fridays. So the mobile unit is here, close by, and we have them available from nine to twelve. The idea is to provide outreach and to educate the community about services. But if there is any crisis intervention, we can respond immediately. So this is pretty much our specialized mobile services. And if you notice, we've been in two effects since twenty twenty-three and been going to pretty much every single city within the county. Ocotillo, Brawley, Slabs, we have different days, we do have a calendar. We make contact with every city or just to find out where did you, the one is located. Besides that, we do have our county cars, we park in a place. But also our community service workers are doing a lot of outreach within the city. And the other thing is, this is very equipped, so we do have telehealth services. So if a, a client needs to be seen by the doctor, an individual is in need of medication support or any other additional services, one of the things that we're doing, we can connect them immediately as well. Just also wanted to mention, in January first of twenty twenty-four, we implement the medical mobile crisis services, which is pretty much what it says. This is a response to an individual. So one of the things that we're doing now is not only offering services from eight to five, but if any individual is contacting us directly to our one eight hundred number and they're having a crisis emergency, what we're doing, if they're medical or any, any individual within the community, we do a screening tool, we assess first, and then we put a team together and we respond to where, whatever the person is. So without utilizing law enforcement. And the idea is, we wanted to decrease, we, we wanted to avoid unnecessary calls to law enforcement or psychiatric hospitalizations or any reincarceration. So we want going and providing, and providing crisis interventions there. And so the mobile crisis services is for any medical recipients, members from the community, and is offered twenty-four hours, seven days a week, all three sixty-five days per year. Also, I wanted to show, um, and share with you guys some results after we, the implementation, oh, after, after the expansion of our crisis continuum of care. And I just wanted to show some comparison of fifty-one fifty holes, pre and post-expansion of services. As we mentioned, we start everything in twenty twenty. And then before that, I just wanted to mention that ninety-three percent of the fifty-one fifties were made by law enforcement. After the implementation, a, a, after the expansion of those additional services, which is in fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, has been decreased to sixty percent of those calls were made by law enforcement. So which is a thirty, and thirty-six, thirty-seven percent is done by our department, which is Imperial County Behavioral Health. So we noticed a decrease of law enforcement involvement, at least in placing individuals on a fifty-one fifty, and an increase of involvement on ICVHS and placing them more on a fifty-one fifty as well. As well, I wanted to mention the number of fifty-one fifties pre and post-intervention. And so for fiscal year seventeen, eighteen, and to nineteen twenty, we have a total of three thousand fifty-two individuals getting placed on a fifty-one fifty, which is an average of a thousand seventy. Post CCMU and Casa Serena implementation, it, it was a decrease of two thousand one hundred and thirty-nine with an average of five hundred and thirty-five individuals. Thank you. Getting placed. So it's a reduction of forty-seven percent of decrease of fifty-one fifties, which is, I think it has been very successful. So besides that, we, we're not only having, we're not only considering those individuals that we place in on a fifty-one fifty, but all, all psychiatric emergencies, which is including fifty-one fifty, and has also us responding to those crisis calls and the interventions that we provide. So I just wanted to mention that the decrease in law enforcement, I mean, we, we will be seeing that. So I just wanted to mention that last year, twenty-three, twenty-four, all psychiatric emergencies, including fifty-one fifty, we have a total of two thousand eight hundred and seventy-nine, which is those four hundred and one only well, only was involvement of law enforcement. And the remainings were, were involvement of the CCMU, the mental health triage unit, and the diversion to Casa Serena. And it was a percentage from, so actually, behavioral health participated eighty-four percent of the time in all the psychiatric emergencies. The ninety-four is not correct, it's eighty-four, I'm sorry. And law enforcement, it was only sixteen percent. We also wanted to provide information based on cities. The number of fifty-one fifties getting placed or getting made by the cities pre and post the expansion of crisis services. And I just wanted to mention before we implemented CCMU, the Casa Serena, and I'm just gonna speak about your city, Callexico. We used to have an average of twelve individuals getting placed on a fifty-one fifty by Callexico PD. After the, the expansion and the implementation of those new programs, I wanted to mention that only forty individuals got placed on a fifty-one fifty, which is an average of three individuals per month.
So when we're talking about new initiatives, I don't know if you're familiar with CalAims. It's something that we've been talking about for the past few years. CalAims, it's a restructuring of our, our system of serving individuals for mental health. This, CalAims not only affects behavioral health, but it also affects probation, county jail, sheriffs, Department of Social Services. So in a way, they, they don't want us to work in silos anymore. They want us to work together. So there's a lot of collaboration happening with these other agencies in some of the, the, the programs that are being implemented. So they gave us specific components of CalAims that needed to be implemented. They started with updating the medical necessity criteria for specialty mental health services. And for, you know, basically, specialty mental health services. And what they did is they changed the criteria so more individuals could qualify for services. That was a big problem that was happening before. There was a specific criteria, if you didn't come with severe mental illness, you would not be admitted. And that's why with M H S A, when they implemented M H S A, we were happy that we could provide services to individuals that not, did not need. Now with that new criteria, it opened the door for allowing more individuals to come and, and receive services in all the, the age groups. And they also changed the way we document. One of the things that was very frustrating to all the people that provide services, the doctors, the clinicians, the rehab techs, it was the amount of documentation that needed to be, for every service that, that we provided, needed to be documented. They changed that, they made it more concise. And they're changing the approach. They're changing now to really, you know, and the reason why we were documenting is because we were afraid of the audits. If it was not well documented, they would do these allowances for the services that you had provided. Now they're changing the focus. They said if you provide something and it's in writing, we're not gonna see it unless we know it's fraud, waste, and abuse. So that, that the way they're looking at audits is very different than the way it was before. They also said, you know, there is no wrong door. If someone comes to our facility, they want services, but they came to the wrong door, we're gonna keep them until we're able to link them to the service that they need. If it's Regional Center, if it's somewhere else, we continue to provide services and they're allowing us to, to bill for the services that we provide from the get-go. They implemented standard screening, screenings and transition tools, which help us decide when we need to transition individuals to a different level of care. They changed the way we do payment reform, that has been a big nightmare. But it's changing the way we bill, where we were used to bill by minutes. Now we, we, we still bill by minutes, but it's in a different way where the reimbursement is really paying for the actual cost of providing the service. Before, they would say, well, this is your rate, and that's what we got. And now they evaluate, how much is it costing us to provide medication support? Or how much it's costing us? So e, e, everything has been changed. They implemented the mobile crisis unit, the Justice Involved Initiative. Before, we had a lockout, we could not provide services when individuals are incarcerated. That has changed, we can start providing services ninety days before they get released. So to make sure that they are linked to services. Many times, individuals with S U D were dying because they would come out and use, and they would overdose because they did not have the same tolerance to, to substances. So now we are working with them, the minute they walk out, we help them with housing, we have, help them with resources. And then the other thing that I had mentioned earlier, they're want, they're integrating the both plans, the mental health and the substance use, and that's work in progress. M H S A, which was something that, uh, was a proposition that passed in two thousand and four, gave us a lot of really good opportunities to provide services for individuals under consumer services supports, prevention and early intervention, innovation, workforce education and training, and capital facility. uh, workforce education and training and capital facilities. So they gave us the opportunity to work with the community. We did, uh, stakeholder meetings to get the feedback from the community, where they wanted, uh, services or the money to be spent. So we implemented all these programs. I'm trying to go fast. So in, uh, March of 2004, uh, they passed Proposition 1. We changed everything with what, what MHSA did. So now they are giving us three buckets of funding and one will be for housing subsidies, 35%, 30% for that, 35% for full service partnership, and 35% for behavioral health services supports. And I'm sorry, not everything transitioned into this slide, but under housing subsidies, we are able to assist individuals with pay, helping with rent vouchers, uh, incentive for landlords. Under full service partnership, it's a program that has been very successful where we treat the individuals with a higher need of mental health. And we provide a lot of services, education, we send them to IBC, uh, we pay for them to take, you know, classes, arts, uh, and, and it's really to get those individuals, uh, involved. And I, I just want to share, there were many families that could not believe how much their kids or their family could really transform once they receive full service partnerships because they realized they could play instruments, they could sing. We have a group that are called the Superstars. And if you see them perform, you won't believe there are CALIMES because they're amazing. And then 35% under, uh, services and supports, again, some early intervention, flexible categories and innovation. Uh, the planning for this new VHS is going to start in 2025 and this is, uh, where we, uh, need the community to attend the forums because your feedback is what's going to help us design the services that we will provide. Uh, they are also, uh, giving bonds for, uh, treatment facilities and we're waiting, we applied for two and we're waiting to see, uh, if we are going to be granted for that. And one of them is to build, uh, uh, SUD facility in Broly. And CARE Act, I know there's been a lot of questions about CARE Act and this is the last slide. Um, it's, it's the, uh, uh, an act that was introduced, uh, to assist those individuals. There's, there was a lot of, uh, uh, need by legislators that they wanted to improve the situation of a lot of the individuals that are homeless, that are not getting treatment. And when they introduced it, they wanted to capture a lot of individuals to fall under and be, um, court mandated to receive services. However, there's a lot of opposition. I know sometimes we're frustrated because we see individuals on the streets that need care and we get frustrated because they say, well, why doesn't anybody do anything? Because those individuals have rights and we cannot force them into treatment and we cannot just get them off the street unless they're a danger to self, a danger to others, or greatly disabled. They have rights. So, uh, CARE Court was implemented specifically for individuals with schizophrenia or a psychotic disorder. And the whole idea is to get them into treatment. And the, the, the role of Behavioral Health, anyone in the community can make a referral for individuals to be, uh, submit a petition for them to become, to be assessed and placed in this court order. Our responsibility is to do an assessment, uh, get them involved, encourage them to participate in treatment. And, and if they are not amenable to, to receive services voluntarily, then the court may force them, uh, under a court order to receive care. Um, what we hear across the state is that these individuals, for the most part, are, uh, accepting care. So the number of individuals going into CARE Court has been minimal. Uh, we started in December of last year and so far we have received six or seven petitions and for the most part, individuals are, um, going into voluntary care. So that's been a, a good thing. Um, and you know, that's pretty much the, and quick update on CARE Court. So we just wanted to give you an update on those initiatives and, you know, this ends our presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Blancarte. Do you have any questions from the council?
I don't have any, thank you for showing up.
Thank you.
I do. Bonstee?
I'm sorry about.
Can you go to the microphones of the people and, and livestream?
So what we've been doing, we're doing a lot of presentations to the schools and we're meeting with the schools on a regular basis. So they do have our, our 1-800 number. So, so that's what the school needs to do. The school needs to call the 1-800 number saying that they have a student in a crisis and then we will respond into the school and provide the assessment and the coordination that is necessary. We also, once we get to the school and assess, we start connecting or contacting the parents so we can start working on the treatment as well. So the schools already have that information. So on a regular basis, we meet with the school, we go to ICOE, every place. So they already have every single, every information. We do receive, unfortunately, I didn't have the number of calls from a specific school, but we do receive a lot of calls, especially for Callexico School District.
So you can be called at any time during the day?
At any time, yes, during school hours, you're right.
My next question was in regards to the mobile services. How do you communicate these services to the community?
Exactly the same. We do a lot of presentations, we attend health fairs, uh, we go to the specific agencies. We do have our meetings with the hospitals, with law enforcement, with anyone. So we've been doing a lot of outreach and we've been doing a lot of dissemination of that information through the community.
And last question, what outreach do you provide for a homeless population?
What outreach we provide for the homeless population? So I guess the outreach is pretty much exactly the same. When we participate in the outreach presentations, we go to community agencies, we present the services that we offer and then also we work together with the Department of Social Services. And every time there is an outreach or an event, we do participate and offer our services for them. If an individual is coming, remember Casa Serena is, is very important to this community because we receive individuals as a walking. Any individual pretty much can go to Casa Serena. And once we start assessing and if the individual is homeless, we start, um, working with them and linking them to the services they need. We connect them.
Casa Serena is located where?
In El Centro, Casa Serena is located, 202 North 8.
Thank you.
I just wanted to add in regards to, to the homeless, there's a coordination that happens countywide to serve individuals in encampments. And DSS is the lead agency and once a request is submitted to address an encampment, they coordinate with the different departments that respond to those situations. We also respond with them. Uh, it's one of the, the recommended models to follow when addressing the homeless. If they do an outreach, we all participate in, in, in doing outreach in the community.
Thank you. Thank you. And now that you mentioned that, um, since the city already, um, will, will start to enforce the, the no camping on public property ordinance, we're going to be reaching out, well, our, our police department's going to be reaching out with, to your department as well as DSS so they can work together and finding what the best method will be to address this new ordinance and anything that applies to behavioral health.
Yes, and, and just to let you know, from experience, we have done this in encampments. And what we find is we go offer services and it, again, this is voluntary. We can have a home for them, we can have an apartment or a hotel. And sometimes of 17, 18, only one accepts. Others just decide to go, you know, find their place, they don't want rules. Uh, they want to get their supply or, you know, it's, it's, we have, uh, some of our faculty, we had a meeting today at the CCC and in addressing what are the needs of the community because we're talking about shelters, about, uh, transitional homes, what is the need? There is a capacity to assist them. Uh, I think the problem is the individuals accepting the service.
I know that the police department has been very satisfied with you guys when it comes to the mobile, the mobile unit. So I thank you for that. Also, the mayor and I had a tour of your facility here at the 101 Hacienda Drive and I, and it was, uh, pretty impressive. So thank you, Ms. Blancarte, for everything.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move over to announcements. Uh, do any council members have any announcements?
Yes, I have an announcement. Uh, the last council meeting, I, uh, not intentionally, I, I appointed Carla Ubarra for the Economic Development Advisory Committee. I had recently appointed someone else, so I would like to, on my part, remove Carla Ubarra as my commissioner for that.
Okay, thank you. Any, but any other council member have any announcement? Okay, I would like to make an announcement. Um, I would like to invite, um, our community to tomorrow's Time Capsule opening. It's going to be, it's going to start here at 4:00 PM at City Hall. Um, so that's going to be a Time Capsule that was started, um, 30 years ago. So it'll be interesting to find out what, what's, what's in there. And there's also going to be some special presentations from the Recreation Department. So I would like to invite all the community, community, I'm sorry. And I would also like to, um, inform that I have, I will be participating tomorrow in a forum in Mexicali, um, uh, in regards to, um, air quality. It's the first bi-national forum, um, that's been, being made. And they invited, um, women, um, mayors in, in, in the region and, and the Mexicali mayor, the Ensenada mayor, the Rosarito mayor and myself will be participating just in one of the section of the forum because it's going to be an all-day forum. But, um, I intend to represent the city well and to discuss our concerns as far as air quality, um, one of them being the, the vehicles in the border and see how we can, um, collaborate with the city of Mexicali on all of us having breathing cleaner air. So that's all I have.
I was, I'd like to also add on the Time Capsule. We have Detective Ranhel, uh, back there who, how old were you when you submitted a letter at the, inside the Time Capsule?
From my recollection, I think I was in fourth grade.
Just like a police officer, from my recollection. So you were in fourth grade. So we're going to see him tomorrow, uh, opening up or help open up the Type Capsule and, uh, let's see what that letter read.
Only we can find it.
Okay.
Okay, we'll move on to public comments. City attorney?
This is a time and place to address city council and I do not appear on the agenda. That is, the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. The city clerk will recognize you and when you come to the microphone, please state your name and place of residence for the record. While members of the public are encouraged to participate, it is unlawful to disturb or delay the council meetings with personal or slanderous remarks. Group commentators may be requested to limit their group comments to 15 minutes. The city council is also prohibited by state law from taking action or discussing items not included on the printed agenda. If the item used to comment on is on the public portion of the agenda, we will take your comment when we get to the item on the agenda. Please direct your questions and comments to the city council. The mayor and city council reserve the right to adjust this time limit based on the number of speakers who wish to address the mayor and the city council. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We will, um, we will limit the first 30 minutes to public comments. Um, and if there are still any after that, we will resume after, after the discussion and potential items, is that what we're doing? Yeah. So, um, so we will start now at 7:34 and should we have to resume, we would end at 7:05, I mean, 8:04. Madam clerk, do we have any public comment?
Yes, we do. I will be calling two speakers at a time, please come up. David Aguirre and Berta Carreño.
Uh, good evening, honorable members of the council and members of the public. Uh, my name is David Aguirre. I'm the executive director of the Imperial County Transportation Commission. Um, I wanted to briefly share, uh, some updates as it pertains to the construction of the Callexico Intermodal Transportation Center, which is located, uh, along Third Street between Rockwood and Efronin. Um, but before I go into actual construction efforts, I wanted to just briefly share some of the history of the project. Um, the project, um, started well before, but, um, really kind of started to take shape back in 2014, uh, with the completion of the feasibility study for the project, which also including a, a citing analysis. Uh, the project design was completed back in 2022 and then received some minor updates in 2024 as we look to start proceeding with construction efforts. Um, but as we are now, we're very excited to have, uh, started construction. We started construction in late March of 2025. Uh, to date, we have completed the demolition of Building 1, which is the old Thrifty Building. Uh, and we have started working towards cleaning out the, the site, which is mostly rubble, concrete, steel beams, uh, old wood and things like that. Uh, but we have started, actually, they, they just demolished the, the wall to Building Number 3, which is the old Presio Local, uh, uh, building. And then we'll be moving over to Building 2, which is a warehouse that is along the alley section. Um, we anticipate having the construction, uh, or at least demolition activities probably completed in the next two weeks or so, um, after which we will start with grading, which will remove a lot of the asphalt, uh, that was, uh, developed as part of the, the parking lot associated with the Thrifty's building. Um, so we have a, a busy next two weeks as we work to do a lot of demolition activities at the site, so pardon our dust. Um, for the project overall, we anticipate being completed somewhere in the March of 2026 timeframe and then opening the facility thereafter. Um, once completed, the facility will have a number of amenities, uh, benches, uh, shelters or shade. Um, there'll be security cameras throughout the site, uh, trash enclosures to collect trash from the public. Uh, it'll have multiple bays for our public transit services, inclusive of possible, um, bays for farm worker buses and possible partnerships with like Greyhound and taxi services. Um, in addition to that, we're looking at having a customer service window, which will, uh, be housed by, um, Imperial Valley Transit staff and security on-site in addition to the camera setup. Um, there'll be lots of lighting amenities. And, uh, lastly, there'll be, um, a number of ADA improvements that we'll be completing throughout the site in addition to the corners near the site. Um, and there'll be landscaping improvements. So when it's all said and done, uh, the facility is going to have a number of different amenities that will hopefully help, uh, revitalize the, the downtown area in the city of Callexico. Um, before I leave, I, I, you know, like to thank the, the public's patience for, as we work towards the construction efforts of the project and thank you for, to the city of Callexico for the continued support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Aguirre, for all you guys are doing for our city.
Absolutely, thank you.
We're going to have Jonathan Ranhel and then after that, Berta Carreño.
Different setting, I like it. So last time I was here, I brought concerns up to the council and to department heads, but now I'm here with good news. So good evening, mayor, council members and members of the public. My name is Jonathan Ranhel. I proudly serve as the vice president of the Callexico Police Officers Association. I'm here tonight to publicly acknowledge and thank the finance department, especially finance director Carla and her team for their dedicated efforts in resolving a critical matter affecting our officers' pay. Recently, her team undertook a difficult task of correcting retroactive pay and step increase errors, errors that in many cases predated the current leadership in finance. I want to sincerely commend you for the professionalism, hard work and care you've shown throughout this process. Correcting the payroll issues is never easy. It involves meticulous attention to detail, coordination and a deep commitment. And your team demonstrated exactly that. For the three officers whose cases have almost been resolved, including myself, the work you've done is nothing short of commendable. But we know this is just the beginning. There are still additional cases that require correction and I'm confident that Carla's team will bring the same level of diligence and fairness to those as well. As vice president of the CPOA, it is my responsibility to advocate for our members to ensure they are treated fairly and compensated accurately. Timely, correct pay is more than a technical issue. It's a major factor in morale and directly affects the quality of service our officers provide to the community. That's why I respectfully ask that the lines of communication remain open. Regular updates, no matter how brief, go a long way toward maintaining trust, reducing anxiety and reinforcing that these matters are a priority. On behalf of the CPOA and Mr. Daniels, I'm sure, thank you to every member of the finance department who played a role in correcting these errors. You've helped turn a point of a concern into a foundation. You've helped turn a point of a concern into a foundation for continued collaboration. We look forward to working alongside you in the same spirit as we move forward. And as a friendly reminder, May 11th through May 17th of 2025 is National Police Week. So, I'm asking anybody that sees an officer out in the public, thank them for their service. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next public comment?
Berta Carreño and Yolanda Cunningham.
Good evening, everybody here, council members and residents that are in this place at this moment. My name is Berta Carreño, I live in 1141E Second Street here in Calixco. And I'm here tonight because I would like to address something that happened during the week at the Community Center. And I would like to mention that the Community Center is kind of a second home for many of us, especially senior citizens that do a lot of activities over there. And it was really sad to see how it was vandalized and all the graffiti and all the, and the conditions, you know, is worsening day by day. And in regards to the situation with, when it was vandalized, I really want to acknowledge the Director of the Recreation Department, Norma Gerardo, because she quickly stepped in and tried to fix whatever was fixable at that moment. And it's, I know that it's working hard, you know, trying to find solutions to what's going on right now in, specifically in that place. I think that the graffiti problem is being extended throughout the community again. I don't know what happened, but it's, I think that is a bad aspect for the city. And we need to address that. We need to work together as community and as council members to find a solution in how to address that problem with the kids, maybe doing some kind of engagement or asking for volunteers to help to paint the graffiti. Many of us will be very happy to dedicate some hours on the weekend, you know, and do that. There is no reason to keep the graffiti on the premises for the longest, for a long time, you know. That can be addressed immediately because we need to change the aspect of the city. We need to make sure that people feel safe and confident here. Right now, for us that go to, we have a recess, which is great, you know, but during classes, I attend a class that leaves at 8:00, 8:00 is already dark. And there is, we don't feel confident, you know, walking through the streets because our cars are parked away. And it's, you know, there is kids going around and, you know, specifically, there is not that sense of safety anymore. And we wanna get that back. And we really are asking our council members, you know, to consider the Community Center as a priority and do something to fix it and to make it a safe place for all of us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Next comment?
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Yolanda Cunningham y vivo en el 1901 de la calle Film. Le hice llegar a la señorita unas hojas, era muy amable, gracias. Pues sí, estamos aquí las personas que somos interesadas y seguimos viniendo. Algunos de nuestros vecinos, gracias por estar aquí. Y venimos primeramente a agradecer que se nos ha escuchado, que se nos está escuchando y se está tomando acción en esto. Gracias, señor City Manager, porque nos han escuchado igual que el señor Cohen. Hemos tenido la oportunidad de hablar y de mostrar documentos que hemos recabado por muchos años. Y una de las razones que nosotros hemos insistido en esto es porque estuvimos buscando los, los permisos de inspección para supuestamente usar ese parque y no, no hay, no hay permisos de inspección. Y de las cosas que nos preocupan realmente es que yo sé que ustedes ya han de ver y lo a ver el parque y saben que el parque está demasiado cerca del área donde las personas solemos caminar. Y eso nos preocupa porque a los residentes y a todas las personas que allí nos ejercitamos, porque nada más imagínense un pelotazo de algún niño, imagínense el impacto que causaría, el daño que causaría una persona. Esos campos no estuvieron bien planificados, eso es sentido común. Y de la imagen que les hice llegar es para que vieran que también el campo pues está ocupando más de la mitad del terreno. Y volvemos a insistir, una de las cosas es el impacto a la comunidad. Seguimos insistiendo en esto porque realmente es demasiado, demasiados campos para, para, al final del día, una zona residencial y eso nos tiene preocupados. También nos tiene consternados y tristes pues que se les haya atacado. Creemos que es injusto a ustedes como miembros del Consilio que se les ha estado atacando tanto como a las personas que hemos estado tratando de que las cosas se hagan bien. Creemos que es injusto para ustedes, sí lo sabemos, pero también es la oportunidad para hacer las cosas bien. Y eso es lo único que estamos pidiendo, que seamos conscientes de eso. Estamos tratando de evitar problemas a futuro, también para la misma ciudad. Nadie, no queremos estar peleados con la comunidad, es desgastante y es abrumante, es cansado. Nosotros estamos esperando que solamente se haga lo correcto. Estamos esperando los resultados de la investigación y hemos sido respetuosos, respetuosos con la ciudad y respetuosos con ustedes y pidiéndole también a Dios, verdad, que nos, que nos haga este, ver la visibilidad para tener este tranquilidad, de verdad, en el fondo es para tener una tranquilidad para todos y para tener una buena convivencia con todos los residentes. Muchas gracias.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Blanca Muñoz.
Buenas tardes, honorables miembros del Consilio de Calixco. Estoy aquí por segunda ocasión, ya que es el único lugar donde siento que he sido escuchada por ustedes, muchas gracias. Estoy aquí por segunda ocasión porque sigo viviendo dos situaciones en las escuelas con mis hijos aquí en Calixco. Son dos casos distintos, pero ambos reflejan la falta de apoyo, supervisión y justicia que han estado enfrentando desde hace meses con la situación de mi hijo con autismo grado 2 y hace un mes y medio con la agresión supuestamente no intencional por otro estudiante dentro de la escuela, William Moreno. Mi hijo, Alan, de 7 años, quien cursa el primer grado de escuela a Rockwood y tiene autismo, durante estos últimos dos meses y medio, ha tenido graves retrocesos en su desarrollo debido al estrés que está viviendo en la escuela. Mi hijo me ha manifestado que un compañero lo agreden, desconozco si es jugando o es intencional ya que mi hijo no tiene conciencia de saber si es así o no. Y en la escuela niegan que esto esté pasando, minimizando las evidencias y reportes constantes que he hecho inmediatamente al recoger a mi hijo cuando él me ha comentado lo que ha pasado. Él no es verbal, él tiene muy, tiene también este, problemas con el habla y lenguaje, no, no lo entienden, pero ellas me argumentan que ellas le entienden perfectamente al niño. La escuela sigue negando, haciendo incluso insinuaciones graves de si el niño se lastima en casa, aún cuando yo lo he revisado y he tomado evidencia de que no es así. Y siempre he reportado al instante lo que le está pasando a mi hijo. Otro compañerito también, en varias ocasiones, ya le ha dicho que no quiere ser su amigo y que huele mal, únicamente porque mi niño usa pañal. Esto ha afectado profundamente su autoestima y su comportamiento. Han aumentado sus crisis al llegar a casa, llega con dolor de cabeza últimamente. Me han estado hablando a las 12 aproximadamente de que se ensució el pañal o de que le duele la cabeza. Sin embargo, cuando he planteado la situación en las múltiples juntas de Haití, me siguen negando que mi hijo requiera apoyos a los que evidentemente estoy pidiendo que necesitan. Yo pues le creo a mi hijo aunque la directora pues pone en duda lo que mi hijo dice, diciendo que pues ella no ha mirado ni nadie se ha percatado de que el niño esté pasando estas situaciones. Sinceramente, me siento impotente e injustamente ignorada porque en este momento yo soy la voz de mis hijos y lo que estoy recibiendo a cambio es un trato que me hace sentir como si estuviera mintiendo o exagerando. Además, la respuesta del Distrito a la queja que presenté por la posible ineligencia y falta de apoyo adecuado ha sido, no ha sido justa tampoco, en lugar de reconocer los problemas que enfrenta mi hijo, simplemente han decidido que el niño, que el equipo de la escuela sigue negando que el niño requiera más apoyo adicional del que ya tiene. Me siento profundamente triste porque no veo acciones concretas para proteger el bienestar de mis hijos. No es que busque un trato especial sino, sino justo y digno. Por otro lado, respecto a mi hijo, hubo quien fue agredido en la escuela, William Moreno. También recibí la respuesta a la queja y una vez más siguen negando que haya sido una agresión, siguen insistiendo en que fue accidente y en base a la investigación que hizo la directora, Ms. Badillo Nara, al momento que habló con mi hijo, que él estaba desorientado cuando solamente pues está triste y le cuesta trabajo hablar de lo que sucedió. Porque no se, no se ha tomado en cuenta su declaración desde un principio, a pesar de que existe un video que muestra claramente cómo el otro compañero lo empuja sin justificación alguna. Nadie se ha hecho responsable del accidente, mi hijo está teniendo terapia psicológica. El psicólogo me dijo que realmente le había afectado mentalmente este suceso.
Thank you, ma'am. Disculpe, pero tenemos que...
Muchas gracias a todos, por favor.
Gracias.
No more public comments.
Okay, no more public comments. We move over to City Manager's report.
Yes, Mayor, Mayor, members of the council. I will be very brief. I want to first turn it over to Chief Orozco to talk about two incidents which happened in the last few days, just to give the community and you and the community an update.
Yes, thank you, City Manager. First and foremost, thank you for coming out, Mayor, council members. Thank you for allowing me to speak. The number one question everybody's mind is the Community Center. Obviously, as most people know, it was vandalized on Friday. My investigation team took over the case and they processed evidence. And I'm happy to report that an arrest was made of the individual that created the damage. We were able to recover the actual pellet gun that was used in the incident. He was processed and taken to Juvenile Hall. Obviously, because of the age of the individual, we can't identify who it is. Two other arrests were made for unrelated issues, but it all stems to these juveniles that are hanging out in, in that park area. We've reached out to many vendors to try to facilitate camera systems, not just for the Community Center, but for the rest of the city properties, so we can start monitoring them. Right now, we just have live feed, so that way we can have recordings, so we can start prosecuting a lot of these cases. Another incident that a lot of people have been asking about is the incident at Walmart, where we had an arsonist that went into the business and attempted to set fire into, inside the premises. Our officers arrived on scene within two minutes. Actually, the, the call wasn't even over when the officers were already on property and trying to get, make contact of the individual. The individual was identified as a homeless man and had already gotten into a fight with a, a patron and with an associate of the store. And unfortunately, it kind of bled through to having an altercation with our officers. One officer was injured. He, I'm happy to say that he is well now, he has taken some days off. And he was, the subject was taken to the county jail. Some notable things that happened in the last couple of weeks that I, I wish to share with the council and with the public is that we had a meeting with Southwest Police Academy to assist in trying to recruit officers. They're a fresh out of Academy out of San Diego. We're also working in collaboration with San Diego State University to try to work a partnership. Obviously, San Diego State is expanding, so we're talking to them about how we can help them out while also expanding our police department. We've also worked in collaboration with the school district to merge our Explorer programs, so that way we get the best of both worlds and the kids get a little bit more access to the police department. Plus, we can go on to the schools and we can mentor these kids. And the goal is to start a fast track where we talk with these kids, keep them out of trouble early on, so we're not dealing with incidents like the Community Center. From there, they can go on to be traffic controllers, community service officers and then reserves and then police officer for the police department. Kind of like what you saw, the officer that came out here, homegrown, went through the ranks and is serving our community. That is the goal, what I'm foreseeing. One thing that's also rolling out in the next couple, this week, and you should be hearing about it, our, our partner for the alarm ordinance also is gonna start sending out notices of people that are out of compliance with their, whether they're residential or their business alarms. So, a reminder telling them to come register with the city to get their alarm registered. Also, if we've responded more than five times, there's gonna be a citation that's gonna be sent out. So, that's something that's good for the public to know that these letters are coming out are from our partners in PMAM that are gonna be sending these notices. And that completes my report.
Thank you, Chief. There are three things that are worthy of noting. And one is I've been working on the CFD report for the Hearthstone CFD. I'm very near the end of that and my intent would be to issue a report for council receipt at your next meeting. Likewise, I'm very close on the Cordova Park report and I would also like to get that to you at your next meeting. And then also to complete the report on garbage rates and get that to the City Council at your next meeting. I'd like to also point out that we have, are arranging for your, the new boards and commissions that have been appointed to meet in the next couple, three weeks. With that, we're, are gonna be training required by the state for ethics and harassment issues. I'd also like to point out that we, I've appointed a new HR director that will be on-site June 2nd. And also Marichela Torres has been appointed as Executive Assistant in the City Manager's Office. I could go on, but I won't. So, that, those are the main parts.
Thank you, sir. City Council comments, Mayor Protem Legaspi.
Yes, regarding to the vandalism that occurred here at the Community Center, our primary focus as council members here is the security and safety of our city. That is our number one goal. And just to let y'all know is that council members have been in communication with our police department regarding to what's happening. Every one of us have been in communication. And there's constant phone calls to the chief in regard to what are we gonna do next. Recently, Councilmember Lynch Ocalderona and myself, we have prior law enforcement experience. We met with the chief and the acting lieutenant, Carbajal, and we brainstormed ideas. You know, the CM, our City Manager, gave the chief carte blanche on whatever is needed to arrest these individuals. Remember, we believe that zero tolerance is, is, these, these kids or adults or whatever, they get arrested for vandalism or of any of that nature, zero tolerance, say they go to Juvenile Hall, you know, or county jail. No ifs, ands or buts. And I'm glad that the chief is also working with probation and Juvenile Hall regarding to making this happen. Thank you, Chief, for doing a good job on that. Also, the Mayor, the City Manager, interim chief Contreras, Captain Pascueta and I met at the water plant facilities with Lily Falome. Thank you for giving us a tour. I know there's some concerns there. And thank you for bringing that up. Also, if our Captain Pascueta had brought up some concerns, is also the interim chief. And like I said, safety comes first and we're gonna fix problems. The Mayor and I met with the Board of Supervisor, Jesús Escobar, via Zoom. We talked about the arteries of county roads leading into the city being fixed, especially Cold Road between Bauker and ML King. We're working on rerouting the trucks there. You know, we have a nice roadway there that during the summer, if we don't get that fixed, the roadway is gonna turn ugly, so we need to get that corrected soon and... So we need to get that corrected soon and supervisor Escobar is on top of it. The mayor, the city manager, interim chief Contreras, for Captain Pescara and I met with emergency medical services. This is in regards to services, ambulance services to our citizens, which is a priority. So we're working on something that's coming up in the near future to make it the utmost care for our citizens, for the services that is required for them. I attended the Camarena Memorial Library Dia de los Niños event. They had sixty participants at the event. Thank you, Liseth, for doing such an awesome job there. Also, I attended the, Norma Gerardo had an event for recitals and she had quite a bit of, oh, there it is. She had three hundred participants and art, tent class art exhibits. Thank you, Norma, for doing such an outstanding job there. And like mentioned before with ICTC, council member Lynch Calderón, city manager, plant director, and David, we went out to the site there, our ICT director. Thank you, David, for such an awesome job. I was going to mention all the stuff that you had stated, but I won't, regarding to the fixtures, sidewalks, AD improvements, trees, drainage sewers, fixtures and all that. Thank you for doing such an excellent job, David. Also, we met with ICTC director David again regarding to safety procedures at the transportation hub and see what type of security is going to be implemented, implemented there. And that is, oh, I attended the SCAG meeting recently with David Aguirre, director of SCAG. Salgado, director, Aguirre, Salgado. They both work in the same office, thank you. So it was a good informative meeting on how to bring economic development here. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Thailanda.
Good evening, everyone. I had the opportunity to meet with staff and councilmember Marquez for the CFD for Hearthstone. It was really interesting and hopefully when we have the city manager give us an update at the next meeting, he can bring to light a lot of the things that have transpired with that CFD and where the money's gone or has not gone. I also had the opportunity to attend the California Transportation Commission meeting in El Centro at the library. It was awesome. It's where all the cities came to highlight the different transportation projects that they've been doing in their communities. Then the ICTC meeting, which really important from there, Caltrans gave an update that they will be hopefully rolling out the long range and short range plan for our border crossing traffic this summer to present and hopefully collaborate with our city and see how we can improve traffic flow southbound into Baja. Yes, that's, we'll keep it transparent. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Marquez.
Since the last meeting, I was able to meet with the representative from Steve Padilla's office with councilmember Thailanda. We talked about different things having to do with some of the CFDs and how we can go about fixing those. Also looking forward to the report that will be presented. I also met with Republic Services with Mayor, Madam Mayor Norikumbo and a lot of our questions were answered. We had a better understanding of what services they provide for the city and I feel very confident with what they're bringing to the table after having that meeting with them. I also had the opportunity to meet with community members and kind of speak about their concerns in regards to public parks and playing fields. It seems to be like a hot topic right now, but I do see their sense of urgency as well as members of the Cordova community. And lastly, I had a meeting with my appointed commissioners in reference to, we talked and talked about the vision, duties, and restrictions in regards to those positions, providing new ideas and solutions to correct certain problems and how we can better serve the community, working together with them. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Calderón.
Yes, good evening and welcome to our meeting tonight. April twenty first, first, I attended the town hall meeting with Congressman Raúl Ruiz at Southwest High School. He spoke about many of the shortcomings for Imperial County for the newer future. Also, he answered a lot of questions from the public, especially in the medical field where we're short of medical and we don't have the medical facilities that this county requires. April twenty fourth, the mayor and I attended the commissioner's swearing ceremony here at city hall. There was many of the loved ones that attended and that was good to see our community join us and congratulate these commissioners that are willing to embark into changing Collexico. April twenty eighth, the mayor and I also met with Collexico Unified School District regarding a landscaping project for the chamber of conference. Trying to bring some new ideas and hopefully that's going to be one of our best icons, I think, when you show up to Collexico. And May fifth, which is Cinco de Mayo, Mr. Legaspi and I attended the recreational program at San Diego State. This was an eye opener. We had little girls dancing, we had everybody. It was a full program of the activities that our recreation programs or community center offers. Florde Corrico, I mean, these ladies look like professionals. I mean, they took the night. And lastly, Ms. Gerardo, thank you and thank your staff for the hard work and the good that we had that night. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Calderón. First, well, I'm going to be brief, but I just want to use this time to thank our Collexico Police Department. They have been very busy the last few weeks and they've really been on top of things. I want to say that I am very proud of you, Chief, and your staff and your police officers. I know that you're probably fifty percent short staff according to what our population should have and you guys are doing an exceptional job and I want you guys to know that and I want you to pass on that message to your police officers and tell them that we appreciate them very much and we're very proud of the work that they've been doing. And other than that, I just want to say that I'm very honored to work with my fellow council members. We've had meetings, all of us, different meetings attending to different situations. I could honestly say we're a great team and we all are moving forward with progress for our city. So I just want to, that's all I wanted to mention in this time. Thank you. So, we're going to move over to the consent agenda. Do we have any public comment? Okay, do you have a motion to approve the consent agenda or?
Yes, I have, I'll motion to approve items six, seven, eight, nine, eleven, twelve, thirteen, and fifteen. And I would like to pull items ten and fourteen first.
Okay, do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, roll call.
Mayor Norikumbo.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Legaspi.
Yes.
Councilmember Thailanda.
Yes.
Councilmember Marquez.
Yes.
Councilmember Calderón.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, so we're moving on to item number ten.
Item number ten and I guess it's yours, Chief. The cost of the two police motorcycles is sixty-nine thousand, three hundred and fifty-five, which is cheaper than one unit. So I commend you for that. We're trying to get more officers on the street for us. But the question I have, in the contract, I don't see any equipment or training for our officers and safety is very important, especially if they're going to be on a motorcycle. So how do we plan to cover this?
So the, this grant, it's through the CAMAS grants, the same grant we used to buy the F-150 for DUI enforcement. So it's going to cover for the two motorcycles at eighteen thousand, three hundred and fifty-two and fifty cents. Plus, this grant also pays for the upfitting of the motorcycles, so the lights, sirens, radio. It also has a section there for three thousand, two hundred to buy motorcycle helmets, so brand new ones. Even though we still have an old one at the station, it allows us to buy two brand new ones. Obviously, we have to see who's going to ride the motorcycles because obviously what fits me isn't going to fit the twenty-year-old, fresh out of the academy, thin, super cop. So obviously, that's different. So a lot of the equipment that our motor officers are using now is a little bit more relaxed than what we're used to. Seeing the high, you know, boots and the thin pants with the stripes, they're not using that anymore. They're using something almost similar to what I'm wearing now, but you know, obviously road rash resistant. Pants, I did a little quick research, they run about a hundred and fourteen to a hundred and fifty dollars, which is about what each piece of this uniform costs. So it's part of a uniform allowance, but we're going to pull that obviously from our budget to pay for it. Training is covered through, I believe it's the Semerito County Sheriff's Office. They do a two-week course and it's post-plan four, so we get reimbursed the travel and the hotel per diem. So that is our plan. What I foresee is I like to, as we bring up our staff levels, there's going to be a few teams that are going to be four and one and I like to turn two of those bodies into permanent motor officers so that way during the day shift, they're going to be running the motorcycles or a unit and so the fattest parts of our teams are going to be during our peak hours. So that's what I foresee doing with our, two of our officers, so just obviously our speeders, our afternoon traffic and getting out there and, you know, getting control of the traffic.
Thank you very much. Safety is a priority.
Of course.
All right. The next item is fourteen and the reason I'm bringing it up because I think this is, item is coming to closure, Cold Road. Prior to this, prior to us coming onboard the council here, there was actually a change order for approximately six hundred thousand dollars on this project. And we came onboard, I never saw it coming back to the council for approval. So my question is, was this change order ever handled? And if so, how was it handled? And I hope that we did the right thing to make sure that we have enough asphalt that these trucks are not going to tear up our Cold Road in the summer.
Can I interrupt you just for a bit there before, we're going to put that on hold and we're going to vote on item number ten since we pulled that out. So do I have a motion to approve item number ten?
A motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Mayor Norikumbo?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Legaspi?
Yes.
Councilmember Thailanda?
Yes.
Councilmember Marquez?
Yes.
Councilmember Calderón?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, Ms. Falome.
And I apologize for getting ahead, but it is important because I mean it was six, approximately over six hundred thousand dollars.
Correct, it was above six hundred thousand dollars. That was option number one. Option number two was to do a smaller base. So we went with option number two that was within our approval of the change orders of two hundred thousand dollars. The project is almost complete. Hopefully, I will have a notice of completion on June fourth, I believe. It's the June fourth. But yes, so the first change order was not approved by council. So myself, as well as our construction management team and our engineering, on-call engineer who prepared the plans, went back to see the quarrying of Cold Boulevard. So we recommended, you know, not the, I don't have the numbers with me right now, but a little smaller base that would also help out in surfacing the north lane that on Cold Boulevard. But yes, it has already been reviewed and stamped by the engineer. So this is just to continue or amend the agreement with Nicholas Engineering, who is doing the construction management team. The project was only supposed to last so much days, but unfortunately, we were having issues with the company that provided the A-RAM. They had limited and also as well as the temperature in the month of February. There's a certain temperature that the asphalt has to be in order for them to install. So that's why we had to have a little suspension, but the project is continuing and the notice of completion, you should be seeing it on June fourth.
And I think based on our policy, the two hundred thousand should have came back to this council, correct, for approval?
No, when the agreement was approved back in October, we have an ordinance that stipulates that we can put change orders up to ten percent of the base bid. So it was already approved when the original bid was awarded back in October. I'm sorry, July.
I think that's the city manager that can do that.
Right, the ordinance stipulates that the council approve it and then the city manager can sign the change orders.
Okay.
I have a question regarding that too, now that it's been pulled. The change order, it says the reason for the change, for this particular change order with Nicholas Engineering, it says pre-construction meeting, or it says during project pre-construction meeting, it was discussed that no information was provided for existing pavement section. So unless I'm reading that wrong, it leads me to believe that this change order is a consequence of information not being known or given or discussed in the pre-construction meeting. And the reason why I'm bringing that up is because obviously if this is something that, that, you know, could have been prevented, you know, almost twenty thousand dollars extra, I would like to, if you can clarify if that's the reason, because you're giving us one reason, but this document is saying that that they didn't have certain information in the pre-construction meeting.
No, well, the temperature as well as the plant was one reason, but there also, it was recommended to do the quarrying to see the depth of the asphalt of the Cold Road in that particular moment and to see if, you know, if the plans and specs were correct and make sure that we were applying the correct levels of asphalt. So a quarrying was also done after the pre-construction meeting. I think we, they poured about, I want to say fourteen to fifteen places along Cold Road.
Okay, so there was, so it wasn't because there was some information missing that they weren't made aware of in the pre-construction?
We wanted to make sure that they were applying the correct asphalt, the grinding and the applying of the correct asphalt.
And is that information that we, the city staff, needs to provide at those meetings? Or is it information that the engineering firm, the consultant, or whoever does our requests for proposals should be giving out that we pay?
It's the information that the engineer on-call should be doing. So for any future projects, we have to make sure that they do a quarrying before doing the plans and specs.
Right, so because I think that when something like this happens, if we're paying an engineering firm to give us, you know, to do a, formulate a request for proposal for, on behalf of the city and those are pretty expensive, usually, we should expect that they, they're able to identify, you know, common sense problems like these or common issues like these as far as pavement. So I would just like this to not be something that is ongoing to where, you know, we have to be able to somehow hold these engineering firms accountable for not doing correct requests for proposals because it's costing us an additional nineteen thousand dollars. So if you guys can just figure out a way moving forward to where somehow in the agreement that when we go out or when we, you know, have documents from these engineering firms, that they're the ones that are held accountable because they're the experts and we're paying them for that information. That's all I have. Anybody else have any questions or comments?
We have a public comment.
Okay.
Julio Rocha.
Julio Rocha.
Good evening, councilmembers and board. Uh, yeah, I just wanted to speak about Coal Road that I mentioned to Mr. Calderon. Well, I just drove by, not, not today, but when they were doing the overpayment, the asphalt, I noticed that the pingsprying wasn't done. So, I called him up and I asked him, have we paid the contractor yet? And Ms. Followme, you're, you're in charge of the project? Okay, well, you know, the, the reason I, I ask her, because if I mention it to you that there was, I saw a lot of, you know, a lot of little corrections there that, on the asphalt, that I brought it to his attention, and we should pay more attention to those kind of issues before we do a final payment to the contractor. That's all I wanted to bring it up to your attention.
Thank you, and I understand that this contract that we're paying Nicholas Engineering is because they're the ones that are going, that are looking and making sure that everything was done correctly, right? So, they're the ones that should be identifying these issues, and, and they're saying everything's good?
The project hasn't been completed yet, so I'll check the items that are pending, but once a contractor is done, Nicholas prepares a punch list and goes over with the contractor the items that are pending, or that needs to be replaced. So, again, the project has not been completed yet, it's in, like, in the final phases.
Okay, so they're still gonna check it out, and, okay? Okay.
Well, Madam Mayor, for the gentleman who just spoke, if you could, if you could, I'd be interested in your list of observations, that, where you thought there might be some deficiencies, I'd, I'd be very interested in seeing that. Thank you.
Okay, there's no further comment or questions? Do we have a motion to approve item number, was it fourteen?
Some.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Mayor Noricumbo?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Legaspi?
Yes.
Councilmember Thailanda?
Yes.
Councilmember Marquez?
Yes.
Councilmember Calderon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, moving on to discussion and potential action items. Item number sixteen, Skoroni Road Pavement Rehabilitation State Project Number L, PPSB1L-5168034, award bid proposal from Road Engineering, Inc. in the amount of seven hundred and thirty-one thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars for Skoroni Road Pavement Rehabilitation State Project. Authorized interim city manager to sign construction agreement between the City of Callexico and Rove Engineering in the amount of seven hundred and thirty-one thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars for Skoroni Road Pavement Rehabilit, Rehabilitation State Project. Authorized interim city manager to approve any future change orders not to exceed seventy-three thousand, one hundred and seventy-seven thousand, I'm sorry, hundred, wait, is that right? Seventy-three thousand, one hundred and seventy-seven dollars, which is ten percent of Road, Rove Engineering's base bid, as per city ordinance number twelve eighteen, and adopt budget amendment resolution for fund number four twelve, state grant. Do we have any comment, or does, by, from a city manager or Public Works, or does the council have any questions?
I have just a comment, I don't know, go ahead, Ms. Followme.
Just for FYI, the city received four hundred and seventy-one thousand through a state grant from the Department of Transportation for a Skoroni Road rehab between Coal Boulevard and Jasper Road. We went out to bid, and the office of the city clerk received two bids, one from Rove Engineering for seven hundred and thirty-one thousand, seven hundred and seventy, and the second one from Hazard Construction, eight hundred and thirty thousand, five hundred and fifty. We reviewed the bids, and Rove Engineering is the low responsible bidder. As in attachment one, you could, you will see that Rove Engineering came under the, under the engineer's cost estimate. So, if you have any questions?
The, okay, you're done? The, the only comment I have is the seventy-three thousand, one hundred and seventy for change orders, and I hope that this doesn't become like a ritual, because I know there's things that come up that they can't see when they do the evaluation and so forth, but if you think about it, it's almost as much as the difference between the two bidders. I think if the difference is ninety thousand, and the ten percent is seventy-three, one hundred and seventy-seven, so just make sure that we don't do any change orders, Mr. Daniels.
I, I don't like change orders, they are a sign of weakness of either what you've designed and put out and bid, but it is not, it, they should own, they should be limited to things that were not known or knowable at the time the bid was awarded.
And I know that, I know that, but if you look at it, it's almost ten percent difference between the two bidders, so that's all I want to say.
Here's a case where I don't like to use my pen.
Thank you, so do I.
And I understand the direction.
Councilmember, Mayor Protem Legaspi, you have any comments?
You know, all I know, all I wanna say is that it's long overdue, that, that roadway, that's Skoroni Road, right next to the movie theaters and Applebee's and the hotels, it's been like that since, I don't know, for, forever. So, thank you for addressing that and getting that fixed, thank you.
Ms. Followme, I do have one more question. How far is it gonna extend up north? This project is gonna extend how far north?
Up to Jasper.
Jasper?
Yes.
Okay, Councilmember Thailanda, do you have any comments?
No, except that contingency, ten percent contingency is typical in all projects, right?
Yes, and, and the reason we request ten percent is because sometimes there's some needed items that need to be done, and instead of waiting and then coming back to council and preparing the agenda items, so that's why we prefer ten percent, but if it's the council's direction for any future projects, we can reduce it down to five percent if that feels comfortable to you guys.
No, just, I'm just making sure, yeah, 'cause I, I always say it's ten percent, but no, other than that, I'm fine, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Marquez? Okay, um, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second?
A second.
Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Noricumbo?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Legaspi?
Yes.
Councilmember Thailanda?
Yes.
Councilmember Marquez?
Yes.
Councilmember Calderon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, item number seventeen, Skoroni Road Pavement Rehabilitation State Project, authorized interim city man, manager to sign agreement of professional services between City of Callexico and Dynamic Consulting Engineers in the amount of eighty-one thousand, seven hundred, seventy-three dollars and forty cents for construction management, geotechnical and inspection services for Skoroni Road Pavement Rehabilitation, and adopt budget amendment resolution for fund number two thirty-seven, road maintenance rehabilitation fund. So, it's pretty much the same thing, but they're gonna do the project management?
Correct, since we don't have a resident, well, an engineer, we use contracts, construction management, or a resident, becomes our resident engineer, and oversees the project, and makes sure that they're following all the guidelines and the plans and specifications.
Okay, do you have any comment, Mayor Protem Legaspi? Councilmember Thailand?
Nope.
Are you on? Councilmember Calderon?
No, but I have a motion to approve.
Okay, do you have a second?
Okay.
Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Noricumbo?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Legaspi?
Yes.
Councilmember Thailanda?
Yes.
Councilmember Marquez?
Yes.
Councilmember Calderon?
Yes, and thank you, Ms. Followme.
Motion passes.
Okay, item number eighteen, authorized interim city manager to sign amendment number three between the City of Callexico and Dynamic Consulting Engineers in the amount of five hundred, seven dollars, five hundred and eight, five hundred thousand, five hundred and eighty-six dollars. Like, that's cheap, for construction management services, environmental and consulting services for the New River Improvement Project, Callexico Reach.
Um, well, the New River Project has been a project that was originally supposed to only be three hundred days, it has exceeded the three hundred days, it's now been like two years. And unfortunately, when the RFP went out to do construction management for the New River, again, it only was supposed to be three hundred days, but the city has had several obstacles, as this project has been in construction. So, we have had to, we had needed Dynamic Consulting Engineers to assist us with all those obstacles. Obstacles buried from, right away, from biological services, from when they were doing dig work, needed to replace a thirty-inch and a sixteen-inch.
Did it have owl burrow also?
The burrowing owls, yes, they, they have special requirements, and unfortunately, the burrowing owls love to be next, next to our Callexico International Airport, our wastewater. And so, those were some of the environmental issues that we had. So, again, Dynamic Consulting Engineers have been assisting us with doing the construction management, overseeing, being out there every day, Monday through, almost, sometimes the contractor worked on Saturdays, so they are requesting an amendment to the agreement for all those hours and services that they have provided.
Mayor Protem Legaspi, you have any questions, comments?
No.
Councilmember Thailand?
Nope.
Councilmember Marquez?
So, the amendment is to, is being made to what, I'm sorry?
It's for the hours that they have worked, and, well, they worked in November, additional hours in November, January, February, as well as they're currently also helping us now trying to close out the project. They're doing punch lists, having an inspector there, making sure everything's done, making sure that all the equipment that has been installed is working properly, making sure that our staff is getting the training to do, to work once the project is released, so that's what Dynamic Engineering is assisting us.
So, the signed amendment is to a previous contract you had with them?
The amendment, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Calderon?
Ms. Followme, I know this project has several phases, where are we at? What phase are we on?
The phase is at, hopefully, crossing my fingers, to bring in the notice of completion soon. We are planning a ribbon cutting for May twenty-third at ten AM, which all of you and our residents are invited, but I can say that as of today, the project is ninety-eight percent completed. We just need to continue a little bit more training, and just making sure that all the equipment is working properly.
Once again, when was, is the ribbon cutting?
The ribbon cutting is scheduled for May twenty-third at ten AM.
Ten AM?
You will be sent an invite.
All right, thank you very much.
Well, you won't, but the rest of the council will.
Um, does this amendment, um, it, it, is, is...
The funding will be paid out of the statement.
The funding is all state grant, it, it's not any city funding?
Well, there's a portion of...
Or is that operating budget?
The operating budget, because of the storm that we had back in with Hillary, it created some, some damage, so that, unfortunately, the state grant does not cover the storm, so we had to, we have to use the funding that we scheduled for operation and maintenance to cover those costs.
So, when we had, when we had the declaration, the emergency declaration, we weren't able to recoup that money for that damage from the storm?
No, our former fire chief placed the, it in the application, but unfortunately, because it was a construction project, and the contractor had insurance, it fell, it would, it fell under their...
The contractor's insurance?
Yes.
So, the contractor's insurance didn't pay for any of the damage?
It paid, it probably paid for their portion, but we don't contribute it into it, it's a force majeure, force majeure? I don't know if I'm saying that correctly.
Okay, and then this would be the final expense as far as the construction goes?
For construction management, yes.
Good, all right. Do we have motion?
Motion to approve.
To approve, do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Noricumbo?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Legaspi?
Yes.
Councilmember Thailanda?
Yes.
Councilmember Marquez?
Yes.
Councilmember Calderon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, item number nineteen, introduction and first reading by title only of an ordinance amending Callexico Municipal Code Section two point zero four point zero six zero regarding city council agenda order of business.
Madam Mayor, this is to terminate the process of reading the, the city mission off of the automatic agenda.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
The motion is to approve, right? Motion to approve by Councilmember Calderon, second by Councilmember Marquez, roll call.
Mayor Noricumbo?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Legaspi?
Yes.
Councilmember Thailanda?
Yes.
Councilmember Marquez?
Yes.
Councilmember Calderon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, item number twenty, appointment by mayor and council members to the following commissions, and then I'll, I'll, I'll start one in order, but you were going to make a comment on this.
Yes, I, I received two applications, and I'd like to include those in this item, for Personnel Commission, Jose Armando Garcia, and for the Community Services Commission, Jaime Duron.
Okay, thank you, so we'll start with Mayor Protem Legaspi, will, do you have any commissions left?
No, I'm not gonna point anyone.
Okay, Councilmember Thailanda?
Um, yes, I am going to appoint Javier Gonzalez to the Police Traffic and Code Enforcement...
Move your mic.
Oh, Javier Gonzalez for the Police Traffic and Code Enforcement Commission, and Mr. Duron for the Community Services Commission, and so, Carly Barra's up for grabs for the...
They already, they already, somebody else has her...
All right, well, those two for this time.
Unless you wanna steal it.
No, I wanted to appoint her last time, but he goes before me, so he appointed her wrongly.
I recruited her.
Appointed her, right, let's fight.
We're all fighting.
Let's fight.
Okay, and so, you've got, so those two you're gonna appoint, okay?
And if you could include it in the next agenda, so I can finalize the rest.
Okay, Councilmember Marquez.
The rest of the commissions.
Okay, Councilmember Marquez, can you name the commission and your appointment, please?
Yes, so for Financial Advisory Commission, Carly Barra, for Measure H, Norma Aguilar.
Okay, Councilmember Calderon?
For Personnel Commission, Jose Armando Garcia, and I...
Okay, um, I would like to appoint to the Library Board of Trustees, April Ayala. And that's all I have for now. Okay, item number twenty-one, accept a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant awarded by the Southern California Association of Governments from the Regional Early Action Planning Grant Program of 2021 for implementation of the Six-Cycle Housing Element Rezones Program and adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute the grant agreement.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, the housing element will need an environmental impact report. Michael was able to apply to SCAG, and we wanna acknowledge that SCAG representative is here today, and if you brought an oversized check, that's okay, but they were very helpful in getting us the funds to be able to contract that environmental analysis out, so Michael has a short, less than three-minute presentation.
Yeah, this, I was hoping for one of those big checks, but I guess not tonight.
Just give us a check, and we can skip the presentation.
But, yeah, this will help us with our housing element certification, and so, what I'd like to go through is our timeline moving forward. So, with this grant, we'll be able to hopefully execute it by May sixteenth, and then moving forward on June fourth, we'll present our draft housing element with the housing sites inventory, and this housing sites inventory is elemental to this grant, because it includes all the sites that are proposed for land use designation changes or rezones, which require the environmental analysis. This grant will fund the environmental impact report for these housing sites, and so, after we present that to you, we'll submit the draft housing element to HCD. We're working, currently, we're working with them on our methodology to make sure that, you know, we're pretty certain that we're going, we're going in the right direction to get certification, so that when you do adopt it later in the year, we will, we will be able to move forward with the EIR preparation. So, I'm hoping that by the end of July, we'll get a letter of certification from, that, from HCD, which is the California Department of Housing and Community Development, and then, of course, you go dark in August, and hopefully, on... And hopefully on September third, I'll be able to bring the housing element for adoption. And then upon adoption, we'll continue working on an effort to prepare the EIR for the, for the rezones program that you would have adopted with the housing element. And by January fourteenth, I'm hoping to have a draft ready for public review and comment. And, and then hopefully by, the grant expenditure deadline is June the thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-six, so we have to have everything done by then. And hopefully by May sixth, I'll have a certifiable EIR and the rezones ordinance and the land use element amendment resolution before you. And then on May twentieth, the second reading for the ordinance. And then thirty days after that, the rezones would go into effect.
Okay, I didn't even ask if we had any public comment on anything. I didn't ask anything. Sorry about that. Oh, okay.
Good afternoon, Council. David Salgado, I'm a Government Affairs Officer with the Southern California Association of Governments, covering Coachella Valley, on behalf of SCAG. Congratulations on the grant award of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. You know, these grants were a part of a big program that SCAG was awarded through HCD called the REEP two point oh program. It's about two hundred and fifty million dollars that SCAG was provided to distribute to all of our member cities to support housing development in and around the region. And so this is just a small piece of that funding and I want to commend Michael and the city. You were initially awarded, I believe, a hundred and thirty thousand dollar, a hundred and thirty million dollar, I'm sorry, a hundred and thirty thousand dollars through the sub regional partnership.
Was that a hundred and thirty dollars?
A hundred and thirty thousand dollars through the Sub Regional Partnership Program, which is managed by ICTC. And so you were successful in advocating for more dollars to fully fund the project to the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And so big checks are great, but I think the completion of the housing element is going to be the real kind of return on that investment. I commend you all for taking the action tonight. And I'm here to support Michael in the process. And I want to also mention that SCAG has made this process a lot easier for our members, which includes the one hundred and ninety-one cities in and around the six-county SCAG region. We'll be helping with procurement, grant management, grant reporting, oversight, and then reviewing all of those documents that Mike mentioned, Michael mentioned as a part of this process. And so it's, it takes a lot of the work out of the staff's hands. And he's able to lean a little bit on SCAG, who has a Department of Housing specialists, who are doing this work throughout the region. And so it adds a little bit of value to the process in that sense. And so I just want to, again, congratulate you and appreciate your time tonight. I brought a couple fact sheets for the program. I'll leave them behind. And again, if you have any questions or ever need to follow up on anything as it pertains to SCAG, I'm available. And thank you, Councilmember Legaspi, for attending the conference, as well as interim city manager Rick Daniels. We appreciate your attendance. That's one of our sponsors there, BB&amp;K. So it's a great turnout for our annual conference. I'll just mention that to you. About nine hundred and fifty people attended. And so a great conference we have every year. You're always welcome to attend. And thank you for your time.
Thank you for your generous donation. I wanted to ask, does this two hundred and fifty thousand offset the cost on our budget for something else that we can use?
Yeah, so I was, I was preserving my planning department budget. I had a line item there with a hundred and fourteen thousand for consulting services. And I was guarding it, you know, for this purpose. So now it will allow us to, for example, for your next council meeting, I am bringing an item to hopefully bring on adjunct staff to help with planning, to help with a lot of our planning projects. So it does free up funding for other projects for the city.
Great, thank you. Any other questions or comments from the council? Councilmember Thailand? Councilmember Marquez, Calderon?
Thank you, Mr. Salado.
Okay, motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Roll call, Madam Clerk?
Mayor Nodikumbo?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Legaspi?
Yes.
Councilmember Thailand?
Yes.
Councilmember Marquez?
Yes.
Councilmember Calderon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, informational items. Report on the status of the city's commercial cannabis permitting program.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, this is, this is a difficult issue. The, the state in about twenty fifteen allowed cities to permit cannabis or marijuana operations in cities. It was not mandatory, but it gave cities the option to permit those facilities. When they did, the presumption was that there would be strict regulation of those, of the product, which is still federally illegal. And, and the public is, is divided on, on the issue of cannabis. But whenever it goes to a public vote, it's usually sixty or seventy percent favorable for regulations or for permission. I've raised the issue that, and my conclusion is that our enforcement program is nonexistent to terribly mediocre. And I don't believe that the basic principles that were expected are being met. So what we need to do is look at tonight is there were all kinds of revenue forecasts and promises. You're going to hear that they didn't materialize. You're going to hear you were promised there were all going to be all kinds of job generations. They didn't materialize. And we have a situation today that there are operations that are existing that do not have approvals and permits. And that's, therefore, they are not paying their amount of taxes and fees due. They haven't received or maintained their state permits. This is, candidly, has failure written all over it. To... So the choice that the council really has is if you're going to allow this business, this type of business, to exist in the community, you need to have an effective regulatory mechanism that has visitations to each of these places at least once a month with the ability to do spot checks, to do inventory analysis, to do revenue forecast, to require that there be receipts for everything that's sold, that there be three hundred and sixty-degree inside and outside and coverage, video coverage of the cash register, that any manifest that where product is sold to another dispensary or cultivation place, that those have the state-required track and trace program in place. It is going to cost the city approximately, at a minimum, about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year to put in place that regulatory system. You will see in the charts tonight that we're not taking in that much. But we should. And if we have to look to recapture additional funds from the cannabis operators, then we need, staff has the obligation to bring that forward to you because it should be, the regulatory cost should be borne by those creating the need for it, not the everyday taxpayers of the city. I have been working with the chief and he is prepared to take over in the police department the cannabis regulations. And I think that's where it belongs. It is, code enforcement in general is a police-like activity. The skill sets are the same, the investigations, the determination about whether violations are occurring or not need to be done by people appropriately trained. And I'm not convinced that's happening now. So while I've probably stolen a lot of what Michael had to say, if he would just scoot through a couple slides here real quick. One backup, backup. One more, one more. Okay, the city council at the time decided to limit the cannabis businesses to those specific areas. First of all, cannabis operations are not limited to those areas because there are unlicensed facilities outside of those areas. Okay, next slide. This was the permitting process. There was an out. The best way to have done it would have been through development agreements, which are contracts for compliance. Instead, they chose the typical land use process. And you go, next slide, please. The city council at the time permitted twenty-three facilities in two thousand and nineteen alone. Four more in twenty, three more in twenty-one, two in twenty-two. And that was on top of six that had already been issued. So thirty-plus permits were issued. I think if you go to the next slide, twelve went, actually went into operation, which is not a surprise to me because on any new business venture, there's always an oversaturation and the market sorts out. But in the second year of operation, the city took in two hundred and ninety thousand and it's been on a steep decline ever since. Now, what I'm here to report is that you don't know, we do not know because we haven't properly regulated this, whether it is a decline in sales or it's a decline in just paying the taxes that the business owners owe the city of Callexico. There, we have not been in those facilities. We don't know what's in there. We have not regulated it from a tax perspective nor an operational perspective. And there are reports that I get almost on a daily basis recently, including that there is a van that parks down by the border crossing and sells out of that van that is unlicensed. And there are observers who have witnessed that van selling to youth, meaning people under twenty-one. To me, that's unacceptable. Small cities, big cities have found a way to regulate that, this product. The city has not done what it needs to do. And it either needs to make the commitment and do it or you should consider revoking the ability to operate those businesses in the city. And that's, that's a short and blunt assessment.
Can I ask?
Be glad to answer any questions.
Currently, none of the storefronts that are open are approved by the state. They're all out of compliance from the state, correct?
That's correct.
So why haven't we shut them now?
We, we, as soon as I arrived, because of my experience in Needles, where they're taking in five and a half million a year and six hundred jobs have been created there, that, and this is a town of sixty-two hundred people, that this troubled me. So I asked code enforcement to go visit one of them that I knew existed, because I drive by it every day. And they were told by the owner, get out of here. We don't care what you think. That's a red flag to me. So since then, I sent the, the code enforcement officer back and he issued a citation. And then we began, I began with the help of Michael and code enforcement, the research into who has permits, who doesn't. And the lack of permits was offensive. And so we reported it to the State Cannabis Bureau because we're not tooled to man, to enforce their regulations. That's their job. But we should work cooperatively and do perhaps joint inspections where the city's regulations and the state regulations are jointly enforced. So we have reported those which we know are operating. But the worst part of this is we don't know what we don't know. Because this industry has operated in the shadow for decades. And, and law enforcement has been had a very difficult challenge in regulating. The idea was by, by legalizing that they would come out of the shadows and law for, and operate in the open. And law enforcement in the form of code enforcement would regulate them and, and everybody would operate and they would pay the taxes. And we have not effectuated that here. And I'm merely bringing this to your attention. And to me, it's a serious problem. The state or the feds could step in at any moment and determine that we have an ineffective program. That's a hard argument to make that we do. So we need to up our game and do this right or get out of the business. And I don't know what the vote was when the legalization happened statewide. My guess is it was probably favorable. But the burden's on us. And I believe that by moving it to Chief Orozco, this will be done properly.
I have a question. Did you say that nobody is in compliance? Not one?
There are, I, there are two.
There are two in compliance?
Yes. A cultivation and a retail.
Well, as best we know, we've not been in those facilities.
Right, but, but I'm saying, do they have a business license to operate, at least? I mean, one thing is inspection and see if they're compliant. Another is if they even have a permit to operate.
Madam, Madam Mayor, there are two that are operating. Do we know whether they have a business license?
They have, two have business, active business licenses and licenses from the Department of Cannabis Control.
And do they have the local permit?
They have our initial use permit.
Okay.
So, so those, you know, we should maybe follow with enforcement. But the ones that, if we've identified any that have their doors open and don't have a permit to operate, I think we should get the Narcotics Task Force involved. And, and, and then they can let them know to get out of here. Because if we don't have the permits, they shouldn't be open.
Well, we have, we have notified the, the State Cannabis Bureau and invited them here to, to help us. But we need to put in place the regulatory framework that's necessary.
I think at this point, though, none of them are in compliance. None, none of them are paying taxes. They don't have permits. They don't have licenses. My opinion is shut them down. We don't wait because then we're liable.
Well, the ones, I'm, I'm sorry, I interrupted. Excuse me. Oh, Madam Mayor, Counselor Marquez, I think you're absolutely right. Those that do not have the business license, the local permit, the state permit, need to be closed as soon as possible because they are tolerated drug dealers.
And if they're not enforcing any of these laws, my concern is for the youth of the community.
Yes.
If no one is monitoring these places, adults are adults. But if we already know they're breaking the law, what's going to stop them from doing anything else?
The two that you say are in compliance, are they even paid up with the taxes as well?
I think they're the only ones that are generating the revenue we are receiving.
You are receiving the quarterly payments?
So up to the last reportable quarters we've had, I'll go back to that slide. For this year, I think if I'm correct- this year, I think, if I'm correct, Carla, there's two pending quarters that we've received this amount thus far. The $69,356.
Because I, I brought this to Acting City Manager Juan Contreras, when he was Acting City Manager, I brought it to his attention multiple times, that even one of them moved across the street without getting a CUP. And it's been just stagnant. So I think if they're not in compliance, we need to shut them down. They should have been shut down a long time ago. This is not acceptable. And I've voiced that for many months. And so hopefully, we can do that effective immediately. And the ordinance allows you to shut them down tomorrow. And so it, it needs to be followed. And I, that's been my gripe for quite a while, and Juan can attest to that.
Especially if they're not allowing us to enter and to check the facility, there's something going on. So Chief, you guys haven't done a spot check yet either, right? So that's a red flag right there.
I have a comment here. I mean, when this industry, industry was approved, they promised strict oversight through regulations and enforcement of this industry. We don't know if this is even exists, even on the ones that have the permit from the state.
Correct.
And from the city. So to allow those or two, this, we have to start from scratch here if we're going to decide to continue with this industry. Obviously, they've never brought any funds to us. You're telling me we have a van downtown selling to our youth? We are a self-insured city here. And the last thing we want is for one of those kids to OD. And they're not going to come after the individual that's in the van selling. They're going to come to us. Because we allowed this industry to continue business regardless if they were approved or not. We don't have cameras. We don't have data. We don't have anything since 2016. But I want to take it a further step here. I want to refer to Mr. Campos and give us the legal side of this whole thing, because I personally, like my colleagues, we should close them all down.
Correct. Yeah, just generally, it looks like on the, just on the regulatory, if they don't have, to do a licensing system, you need the city permit and the state permit, just, so just on that alone, they're not operating properly, you could revoke either the CUP or the development agreement. And that's not even talking about what may exist on the actual site, right? A lot of times, I know, in working with the cities, we have, they may be selling something else, it may not be properly documented, the receipts. Sometimes you have situations where they have illegal construction. But irrespective of that, just on the permitting side, they need to do a permitting system. If they don't have a state permit, then they're not allowed, allowed to operate within the city, on just that alone.
I wanted to make a comment on the two that appear to be in compliance, that do have the permitting. And these are just my thoughts as a business owner. So there was an investment made, clearly, for these two businesses that I'm going to address. There was an investment made and, and if they've been paying for their building, for their business license and complying and have their, their, their state permit there, the fact that they haven't been, that code enforcement hasn't gone out and see if they're in compliance is on us. And we have to be truthful about that. That's on us. So just kind of, just generally saying shut them all down, I don't believe it's fair for those two. Because there is an investment that, that, that they make. But I do think that if the enforcement of, of these type of industries is so time-consuming, so staff-consuming on the city, then it should be something like, and I'll give an example, in, in, in my industry, you have, you've got the health department where you have an inspector that goes quarterly. So we have to pay for that inspection. So if we have to send a code enforcer quarterly or whatever the requirement is, then that should be billed to them. So we should change, you know, see what we can do. I only want to, you know, speak on, on behalf of those that did, you know, try to do things right and, and do have their permitting. And I want to respect the investment that every individual makes to a business. But like I said, we do need, if, if they are going to stay open, those two. Because everybody else, as far as I'm concerned, they should have been shut down a long time ago if they don't have the permits. But these two, we either start enforcing or, you know, because that's on us, so.
Well, Madam Mayor, if I might respond to that, I, I think you're absolutely right. There are, there are two that at least have permits. Now, what we don't know, because we haven't been in those buildings, are they substantively complying with all the rules and regulations that were part of their local permit or part of their state permit? Or are they, is there a trackable financial system there that allows us to determine that they're properly paying the taxes that are due? And we can triangulate that with the state, because they have to report that to the state as well. So, yeah, there's presumption of validity for at least two, they have the appearance. But substance-wise, we don't know. But we will.
And that's what I'm trying to get to. We don't know the unknown. So my question is, those two, I know that they have the permits from the state and the city. Can we suspend them until they get into compliance?
Not, not without doing an inspection, which would find that they are deficient. But that would be, the code enforcement going it, A, gathering all the rules and regulations they're supposed to be complying with. And then going in with a checklist about, are you doing all the things that you're supposed to, like you do on any kind of zoning inspection or a subdivision inspection? It's the same approach. And, and then if they're not, they have a reasonable opportunity to cure and then fines are start being levied.
Well, Mr. Daniels, I know this process will take a while.
Yes.
So during this time, we have one of our juveniles that ODs. How are we going to justify that?
There is no justification. It is there because there's been a history of ignoring the responsibilities the city had.
We look at the ordinance and everything, and everything was violated here. With the ones that had permits and the ones that don't have permits.
We will be, oh, sorry.
Not in compliance, no matter how you see it.
Well.
Well, we don't know. The ones that do have permits, we don't know, because that's why I said it was on us, because we haven't inspected them. So we need to be able to go in there first and inspect them. And then also, not, not just code enforcement, but also our finance needs to contact the state and make sure that their numbers go in hand with our numbers to make sure that they've been paying the sales tax.
If I may.
I understand that, but if you read the ordinance, the responsibility also falls on the cannabis industry, not just the city.
If I may, I think that we need to re-explore the ordinance, because the ordinance actually doesn't identify code enforcement to do it. They identify the police department, the finance department, and the city manager's office. The ordinance is all over the place. And it doesn't even necessarily fall under planning and building. If you look at the ordinance, and there's like seven or eight of them separately for every different type of operation. So initially, in my opinion, I think that when they adopted these ordinances, they shouldn't have adopted those kinds of ordinances, because they were lacking, very mediocre, and here we are. And then the bucket gets passed around, there's turnover, someone quits, they hire HDL and the finance department, because the finance department was doing inspections a few years ago. And it's all over the place. It's mixed up. And I think that, you know, there's a lot of concerns with what is actually there and what's not, because there's a process. You have to check with the state if they have the permits, if they're paying the city, are they up to date, the site plan, are they operating how they said they were going to operate? So you have to inspect the site. Do they have the operating equipment that they need, cameras, security doors, et cetera? And so all those things are a factor here. And I agree with initial investments, also the ones that are open. But I also think that, you know, if, if we know, because I believe a lot of their state licenses lapsed this year. So it just happened, the ones that are not in compliance with the state, they got their licenses from the state revoked this year, 2025. And we, as a city, we should have been doing a better job to get them into compliance or help them out. I, I'm impartial to the industry, but I, I do care about whether they're selling this type of product correctly. So I think that we, as a council, need to look at the ordinances and see if we're going to start revoking, how we want to continue with the ones that are existing. Do we want more? Do we want to stop it there? What, what is the direction of all of us? What, what do we want? Do we want them at all? Do we not want them at all? This is the time.
Well, if I'm correct, I think the cultivation company that is here, the permit, the state permit expired the last month or this month. So am I not even being honest? So what I'm getting at, this is wrong, no matter how you see it. And we're, again, and I'm going to tell you, we are a self-insured city. And if something goes wrong, because this already came out, all of us are going to be responsible for that.
True.
Is that correct, Attorney?
I mean, they'll always look to deep pockets when anything goes wrong.
Well, Madam.
You're instrumental in, in regulating this cannabis.
Madam Mayor, if I might.
Yes, sir.
This needs to be approached with the, the greatest urgency. We need to start with the two that we know have permits, get, get an understanding. And then it's going to take some time, but we will know. And then the ones that have, we know that are out there, that have no permits, those are easy.
Yeah, those, those, you, you don't need any direction, that you have an ordinance that, that's there, that needs to be executed. All you need to do is execute that ordinance.
But I, I wanted to bring the policy issue to the council, because it's unusual to find something like this.
Yeah.
And, and thankfully, the chief has agreed to play a significant role. But keep in mind, this council did not create this problem.
No, but we're going to solve it.
Right. You are the solution. The chief is the solution. And anyway.
I think that, I think it's safe to say that, that, that as far as what's not, what's no permit, you don't even need direction. You already have it in writing what you need to do. As far as policy, I, I, I think the best approach would be present us what your recommendation would be. And then we can start from there.
Right. Thank you.
So I, I think that when we spoke, you brought really good ideas to the table, Mr. Daniels. The regulation measures that you have mentioned before, like the making sure we have the manifest, track and trace for all plants, inventory done monthly for the, both, for both the cultivation and the selling of. I also think, though, that they should be providing us with their ledgers and accounting information. That should be something, because I really don't think that a profitable business is going to be paying $69,000 in taxes. And that's what I'm worried about, when we're trying to, to think that they're in compliance. That, to me, is kind of worrisome. So making sure we have inventory at least, you know, once a month, professional auditors once a year, your idea, and surprise visits. I love that one. But most important, a live scan for all of them. Anyone involved in the business.
Okay, so there's no, there's nothing else on that subject?
I do have, how much time do you need, Mr. Daniels, to tell us that these other two, the cultivation and the, the retail one, are in compliance?
I'll have a status report to you formally at your next meeting, but within the next three or four days, we will make those early determinations and I will communicate with you directly.
Next council meeting?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to future agenda items, Mayor Protemla Gaspie.
Yes, the meters. When is that? Are we ever going to come up with, what's the next step for the meters?
So, yes, Councilman Gaspie, we've been talking again with the IPS. Obviously, the ordinance got fixed as far as the meter zone. So we're looking at where we can recoup the costs of implementing these new meters. Obviously, we're going to be paying licensing fees, we're going to be paying usage fees as far as for using the credit cards. So we have to look into how much we're going to try to recoup as far as the prices hourly. Some of the initial estimations that we're talking about is maybe a dollar an hour from eight to eight during business hours, and then going anywhere between two to five dollars between 8:00 PM to 8:00 AM and metering it 24/7. Initial views from the business community, they're really supportive of any kind of measure we put out as far as pricing after hours. It's the, during business hours, that obviously they, they have their voice, they want to be heard. So what I'm going to start working on is a, a new plan to change the hours and the pricing, so we can get those meters rolled out as soon as possible.
Also, the license plate readers, I know I've been harping on that since day, day one, and we recently had an accident, somebody had passed away, and I think the license plate readers would have pinpointed the, the truck. So when are, when is that going to come into effect, or if you're working on it?
Yes, Councilman Gaspie, so on that incident, we ended up tapping on the, our federal partners' shoulders, the two investigators we have assigned to investigations, and we were on track to identify that driver. I'm happy to report that LPRs are going into the city this week. I identified a grant that allowed us to put four LPRs here in the city. The city did not pay one dime, they're not even billing the city, they're billing FEMA for it. So, but they're putting it in the city. So these are designed to monitor polling places, that's what the grant was for, but they do the same job as any LPR. So one is going to go across the street right here in front of City Hall, another one's going to go in front of Cesar Chavez, another one's going to go on Andrade and Cole, and the last is going to go on Cloak, coming into the elementary school area. So those will go in by this week. We've already started having access to all the LPRs for the whole valley, that started today, actually. So we're actually using the program now to help out investigations. I had a meeting with Flock about a Stone Garden grant that we identified for another $26,000. So these I've identified that I want to put them in the main order reason, because they have to deal with Caltrans. Those might take a little bit, but the money is going to, it's going to get paid now. And then once they get in, it's a two-year contract, it's paid for, again, doesn't come out of the city's budget, it's a grant money. And my intention is to continually, every year, have the grant pay for these cameras, so it doesn't affect the city's budget.
Okay, and I'd also like to thank your traffic controllers, I guess they were, they were, they were painting the downtown area?
Yes, Councilman Gaspie, thank you for reminding me on that one. So our traffic controller is along with Public Works assistants, they went out of their comfort zone and they. they went out of their comfort zone and they, in regular attire, they've been going out and painting red curbs, green curbs. They're addressing a couple intersections that the public has brought to our attention, like Third and Blair and Sherman and Heber, extending the red zones to meet the new law that went into place this year, where red zones are extended 20 feet from the intersection. So that's going to help out with the blind spot at those two intersections, and they've been, along with Public Works, you know, striping and things like that. So I'd like to thank Public Works for her help, and of course, kudos to my traffic enforcement officers and the supervisor that's out there, you know, in the heat and painting these curbs.
You know, I'd like to also thank, I know the mayor had mentioned that we have a very strong council, a team of council members are out there working, but I think the commissioners that we've appointed, they've been out there, I think we're going to have a strong field of commissioners. I know that a group of them have been assisting throughout the city for the past weekends and so forth, so kudos to our commissioners. Also, last but not least, the bushes, fire, it's getting hot. Are we going to be? Well, they've been volunteering their times on some areas. Bushes, are we going to, it's fire hazard season, I think. It's getting hot?
Yeah, we're getting FPS to go out there and abate the non-compliant property. So they'll do that, so we notify the property owner. If we don't get a response in compliance, for compliance, then we go ahead and use this company that we have an existing contract with called Fire Prevention Services, and they go in and remove the brush in the overgrown vegetation that's a fire hazard. And then they'll bill the property owner. And if the property owner doesn't pay, then you, as a council, would then put it on their tax roll. And that would be a subreaction that we'd be for you next year.
Thank you.
Councilmember Tylenda.
Yeah, some of the future agenda items that I've been asking for, it's going to be a year in June for a couple of them, so I'm going to repeat them, because I haven't been on the agenda. Updated fees, internal fee study for business licenses and permit fees and development impact fees. I was told in February that it would be in May, so I hope to see it on the next agenda. I've been patient. I also, I've asked for updates on the status of the CDBG funds for program income, the state reporting that we're out of compliance on. Are we cleared yet? Can we use a program income? Have we completed the reporting requirements that have been outdated since 2014? Juan can help you with that, he knows what I'm talking about if you don't.
We're close.
We're close? Okay.
Well, but I will give you an exact.
I want exact, yes. I also asked back in the summer to bring back the food truck ordinance, and I haven't seen that. There's a draft that the city spent money on, and we haven't revisited it yet, so if we could see that draft ordinance for food trucks, that would be great. Also, I'd like if staff, the chief of police, could give us an update on the task force efforts and with timelines to address the encampments that are on private and public property throughout the city. And also, when we start doing the budget workshops, one thing that I think the entire council is passionate about is staffing our police department and our fire. So I'd like to see goals on how to get those two departments specifically fully staffed, and what the departments in finance and city manager are proposing in order to get more revenue so we can staff them, ideas. I'd like to really see that in the budget workshops when they come before us. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Marquez.
I would like to see the resolution with Cordova, because that's a call I get every day. So hopefully, we'll have it next, you said next, next council meeting. I also wanted to touch base in the fire and police hiring. And obviously, the follow-up on then the regulations or what we're going to do with the cannabis business. We have a business plan to follow and how we can maintain it. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Calderon.
Well, I've been asking for a report on the water and wastewater departments. That is an issue that we have to deal with, and we've just been prolonging it and prolonging it. And I would hate to see one day in mid-July that we don't have water for our citizens. So if we can get it, so we can prioritize that item and make sure that we are on top of getting that ready. And also, this is also a comment. Back after COVID, the county donated approximately 12 RVs that have been sitting on the east side of Collexico. There were 12, I don't know, there's probably four now or six, I don't know where they're at. So before the, you know, I don't know, if someone can look for them, so we can put them up for auction, because they haven't been used in four years, and if we take longer, they're going to be worth.
Yeah.
I mean.
They're over there off of Cole and Balcar, right?
Yeah, well, there's some there. There used to be more, but now there's only like six or seven. But we need to put them, we need to put them up for auction. I guess inventory them and put them up for auction before they go to waste. And that's all I have, because that could buy a lot of sulfur, boss, Mr. Daniels.
Got you, all right.
I'm sorry, I forgot something real quick. I would like to see the maintenance schedule for the downtown area, both power washing and street cleaning, if we have that available. I'd really appreciate it.
I wanted to say that with the idea of removing the trash cans, downtown looks awesome. It looks cleaner. I drive by there and I look for the Republic Service people every morning. I didn't see them today, but I have seen them the other days.
All of a sudden they're showing up?
Yeah, all of a sudden. With that said, there is a bench in front of the old Celwicks building, and they hang out and there's trash there. If maybe we could look into removing it, if the rest of the council's okay, relocating it, just relocating it?
That was actually something that I had asked for before, that we do the same refurbish the benches and put them in the parks.
Yeah, yeah, so relocate it, because there, it just, if you drive by it, there's going to be trash there.
And they're dirty.
And urine, and it's just, yeah. So if we could relocate that, that would be great.
Okay, thank you. By next council meeting, I want to know something about, any progress about Heber Park? Whether, are we moving to go out for bid? Are we already meeting with the intergovernmental, I forget their name, that we already signed an MOU with them? They're going to help us with some funding or find funding? But I want to know by the next meeting that we've done something with Heber Park? Because I'm not going to lose that money. I mean, I'll, we're not going to lose that money. It's not going to happen, so that's a high priority. I also would like to see, Mayor Protem LaGaspie and myself, we went to the water plant and if, the water treatment facility two weeks ago, and according to what came out of that meeting, we have the money and we are ready to start with the upgrades to the water treatment plant without having to increase the water rates at this point in time, at least. So I would like to start, see the working on the RFP or any staff reports on the first phase of the three that we spoke about during that meeting.
The engineering work's already underway.
Okay, perfect. So our constituents will be happy to know that we're going to start upgrades on our water treatment facility, and their water bill is not going to go up for the time being. Also, if we can start, if you can give direction to the police chief, who is very busy. But we want to start having those meetings with DSS and Behavioral Health on enforcement policy for the encampments. We went through a tough couple of months on getting that ordinance in place, and we want to make sure that we start enforcing. I know we're short staffed with PD, but I believe most of the work at this time could be done by county departments. That's kind of what I got out of some of those meetings, that DSS and Behavioral Health would approach the individuals, and all they wanted was one of our police officers there for security purposes during initial contacts. So if we can start having those meetings so that you guys can start working on a policy that will work. And then, a few months ago, I had asked for, when Chief Contreras was acting city manager, I had asked for 72-hour graffiti painting. That was going to be my little requirement, and that's not happened. So painting is very easy, I mean, it really is. And I think we had had talks with Public Works that there was some calculations made on a person who could just drive around and paint. We had even found a vehicle for this person, a loner, to drive around and paint. So we need, there's no reason why graffiti should be there unless, of course, we paint, and then they go and tag again. But there should be no graffiti on public property that stays longer than 72 hours. So please start doing that. And I would like to see those workshops so that we can move forward with Republic Services, those public workshops. Like Councilmember Marquez mentioned earlier, we met with them, and, you know, they're doing their portion, so we need to do ours, and we need to move forward with fulfilling that agreement. That's all I have. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Mayor, Mr. Recall, we did meet in closed session and completed items.
Oh, that's right, we need to go back to closed session.
We did complete items two and three, but one and four.
Before we leave the closed session. In regards to the graffiti embatement, El Centro has a hotline where they can call, and within 72 hours, they'll go and paint the graffiti. And I think maybe, why invent a wheel? Just go visit our neighbors and get that.
Ask El Centro to paint it for us. Were you going to say something?
Maybe they'll, maybe they'll come paint ours.
Yeah, be a good neighbor.
So I was actually exploring an idea, if there's an app already, like, and don't reinvent the wheel. A lot of police departments, they use an app called Nextdoor. It's where we can invite our residents, where they register their address, they're verified residents, so we're not getting that spam that we usually get on other social medias. And we can put it where we're the agency, and they can report things like graffiti, things like, you know, suspicious people, you know, hanging out in certain areas. It's a good way for them to contact us, we're not reinventing the wheel, but that would serve the purpose of the graffiti, eyesores, you know, abandoned vehicles, things like that.
Yeah, there's software programs for interacting with citizens, or for citizens to be able to interact, and there are some programs that will GPS the location of where the graffiti.
Well, we know, we know those programs exist, so we're asking that we get them.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Mayor, one last item, it's 9:30, so we need a motion to continue the meeting past 9:30.
Motion to continue the meeting past 9:30. Roll call.
Mayor Narikomo?
Yes.
Mayor Protem LaGaspie?
Yes.
Councilmember Tylenda?
Yes.
Councilmember Marquez?
Yes.
Councilmember Calderon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, so at this time, we will close open session, and we will resume to closed session at 9:34 p.m.